Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 3rd, 2014, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Spray?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda, or I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, I need to re-- I'm asking to remove two items, four, one, C--
When we get to the consent agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, you want to approve the-- you want to make a motion on the form of agenda first?
I will move to approve.
All right. All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the meeting agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. Now, onto the consent agenda. Anyone on the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Member Bennett?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Items four, one, I, C, or four, one, C, and four, one, J, please.
All right, and Member Brindle also wanted J.
Right.
Anyone else?
We are C, I, and J.
C, I, J.
I'll move the balance of the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the balance of the consent agenda with the exception of four, C, I, and J. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And item four, C, Member Bennett, which is a request for purchase of salt.
Yes, my husband was a Cargill employee for over thirty years. He's a Cargill pensioner, and I removed it so I can abstain from the vote on this matter.
All right, somebody like to move this matter?
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of Mr. Olson on the purchase of salt for the 2014-15 season. I mean, we just forgot the summer, already buying salt. All right, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. Good planning, I'd say. Next is four, I, which is the consideration of the amendment to the Lunds-Barley '71 France Edition Development Contract. Member Bennett, I think I know what you're thinking there, too, but--
Well, actually, that was not a removal. That was simply calling out the second part of the agenda, so I did not remove that.
All right.
All right, so moved.
She moved for Streetbridge. Oh, okay, a second.
Got a motion and a second on four, I. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Carried. And then we do have four, J.
Yep.
Both Member Brindle and Member Bennett.
I would like to request four, J, be tabled for later discussion. I think it's more of a discussion than we need to have, just about what we should have in that ordinance and what doesn't belong in an ordinance.
Why can't we discuss it now and then have them bring it back to us? Maybe that would be more efficient.
I talked--
Senator Neal?
Excuse-- I talked with Councilmember Brindle about it this afternoon and asked her to consider a table to July 1st, given that we've got a number of other items on the agenda tonight. I thought it might behoove us to try to solicit your comments individually and bring back an ordinance. I think this can be a pretty simple ordinance.
Yeah.
But if we could do that in between now and July 1st, it would work for us.
But just so we understand, because there was some comment that came forward, public comment, and I'm the one that brought this forward. The points that were made were about the wording with respect to the damage and the consent, and I think some good points were made that we should model the other ordinances that just state that no damage unless a person immediately cleans up and disposes. That's the model we could emulate.
My only point was kind of rewriting that. I think that's the right direction. I think that's the direction we'd encourage you to go, but councils writing, rewriting the ordinances at the dais can be problematic, and you've got a fairly big agenda tonight.
Mary, did you make a motion? Because I'll second the table.
I'll second the motion to table.
All right.
Got a motion and a second to table the matter until--
July 1st.
July 1st. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay.
So hoping we were going to avoid that July 1st meeting. I hate it when you put things on--
No, it's on the calendar. It even has content already.
All right, we're on to the--
A traditional family vacation, the first week of July. This is year nine. I hate that meeting.
All right, we've got the Special Recognitions and Presentations section of the agenda. First item is the Legacy Destination Award.
Excuse me, Mayor Hovland, you missed the second part of the consent agenda on the top of page two.
Oh, that was where we--
Right.
Which one was the one that you removed there?
We did not remove one.
I didn't remove anything. Nobody's moved it yet.
It's just separated from-- The consent agenda is in section one and section two.
I'll move part two.
To me, the consent agenda is a consent agenda, whether it's in one or two parts, but nonetheless, is there a motion to--
Second.
Is there a motion? Got a motion and a second to pursue, approve consent agenda for Roman II. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Please note, Member Bennett's vote on that. All right, now we're going to move to the Special Recognitions and Presentations section of the agenda, and we've got the Legacy Destination Award, Conservation Minnesota is here. Sheila Smith and Paul Austin are joining us this evening. Ms. Smith, nice to see you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to take just a quick moment of time and congratulate you and the city for your use of legacy amendment opportunities.
Would you identify yourself, please, for the folks at home and the council members?
My name is Sheila Smith. I'm Executive Director of Minnesota Citizens for the Arts. We're located in St. Paul, but we serve a statewide constituency. And this is--
And Mrs. Austin?
Yeah, Paul Austin, I'm the Director of Conservation Minnesota, a statewide conservation organization.
Thanks for joining us.
We are here tonight in our ongoing effort to recognize cities across the state of Minnesota for their legacy projects in the arts, cultural heritage, and outdoors. In that spirit, we hereby declare Edina to be a legacy destination symbolized by this award. The citizens and nonprofits of Edina have been extraordinarily successful in accessing legacy funds for the betterment of your city. I have a list of some of the grants for the members of the council and the mayor, if we can maybe pass that out afterwards. Your arts and history organizations are thriving as a result of the infusion of legacy funds to the area via the State Arts Board and Regional Arts Councils. The Legacy Arts and Culture Fund has supported arts across the city, including performances by the Edina singing seniors at senior residences, nursing homes, and other accessible venues. Legacy funds also support the Givens Foundation for African-American Literature located in Edina, and helped Edina resident Patrick Dwayne take his play "The Accidental Hero", an extraordinary and true World War II story to Minnesotans across the state. Your arts organizations through legacy funds enhance the quality of life and provide educational opportunities for residents and visitors alike.
All right, thanks, Ms. Smith. Ms. Rossen?
Similarly, in the area of outdoors, Edina benefits greatly from the area's great natural resources, and legacy dollars are going to projects that protect and enhance the outdoors and the waters in your area. Projects like the Source Water Protection Plan that provides funds to be used to develop a comprehensive database to protect source water, and the Nine Mile Creek Stabilization Habitat Restoration Project. This will realign portions of Nine Mile Creek to its historical channel, restoring its meander pattern and in-stream habitat, and utilizing bioengineering techniques. This project will also reduce sediment and solids entering the watershed, as well as reducing the amount of phosphorus. So, a project like this, or clearly Edina is benefiting from the Clean Water, Land, and Legacy Amendment, and stands as one of Minnesota's great legacy destinations. These investments, we believe, will help preserve the past, highlight the present, and keep Edina's legacy going strong into the future. So we congratulate you and your community for all your work, and appreciate your use of the funds in such a great way.
Thank you. Any comment from council? We're so pleased that you recognized our community, and we thank you all walked on and--
Yeah, if we can give you this and take a photo.
We're hoping we can take a photo with the city council, and then the mayor down in front with the award, and then we can get that out and about on social media and-- There you go. We either have our arms in the air first. There you go.
Since they're all out here? Do you want to do our word? Okay.
Let's get comfortable, guys. Let's everybody angle in and get squishy. Okay.
Looks good to me. Great. Could pause?
We'll run a little award run tonight, so we've got--
The next matter coming up in this portion of the agenda, in the Special Recognizations and Presentations, is the Bicycle Friendly Community Award. I see Steve Clark from Transfer For Liveable Communities, and Steve, if you had come up and--
Who'd they brought, Hartman?
And Jennifer Janovi from our Bike Edina Task Force. Steve, if you'd introduce your guests, that would be terrific.
Yes, hi, I'm Steve Clark. I'm actually with the League of American Bicyclists now.
Oh, all right.
And with me is Nick Mason with the Bike Alliance of Minnesota, and Jennifer, you all know Jennifer, and Mark Nolan. These are the people that made this award possible.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what the award was for, or who's going to do that? You going to do a PowerPoint?
So, I now travel around the country with the League of American Bicyclists. We were founded in 1880. We are representing fifty-seven million bicyclists around the country, and my job actually right now is to help cities become bike-friendly like Edina is today. And this is-- Go ahead, you can move it. Well, yeah, 2000-- We started the Bicycle Friendly America program in 2002. By 2007, we had, you know, good representation around the country of communities that had become bike-friendly, but by 2010, 2013, in fact, this year now, over three hundred communities are bike-friendly. However, more than six hundred have applied, so there's-- You can feel pretty good about actually gaining this recognition, because let me tell you, when I travel around, there are a lot of cities who really would like to be where you are right now, and they're frustrated that they're not there after spending-- Well, Jennifer can tell you how much time it takes to fill out that application form. So Nick is going to talk about some of the reasons why you were chosen as a bronze. There's bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. You're at bronze, but that just means that you can look forward to keep rising up in the scheme of things, so. Nick?
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I'm Nick Mason. I'm the Education and Technical Assistance Program Manager with the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota, and I get to do the fun stuff that Steve does all around the state of Minnesota. And it is an honor, Mayor Hovland, and members of the council, to be here tonight, because I've been working with advocates and members of the community since you first applied several years ago, and seeing this day come is really a great thing, and I'm sure it is for you guys as well. The award system itself, as Steve said, a long time ago, before 2002, it was kind of a get a picture of your community, do some good things, and you're good. But as you can see today, there are very advanced metrics and benchmarks for where you need to be, and you guys have hit that, hit those benchmarks, and hit them exceedingly well. Also, this is something that a lot of communities want. Some of them are getting them, but more than half of those that apply typically don't get an award. And for those that have been around and working on this in Edina for five years now, I think 2010-- 2009, 2010 was the first application. You know, you guys applied and got an honorable mention the first time, and you didn't sit on your hands. You got organized, and you got to work. Some of the most bike-friendly communities in the country, the one metric we have is mode share, and that is journey to work in the U.S. Census, and that is not all trips, but trips that you made most days of the week the farthest distance by bicycle. So Davis, California, is almost twenty percent of trips are by bicycle by that metric, but Missoula, Montana, six point two percent, and I can't remember where you guys are. Do you remember, Mark? It's around--
One percent.
One?
But I-- There are places that I visited that were zero point one percent, so you're ten times better than they are.
And I think there's a-- I'm sure there's a decimal after that one percent, too, so you've got a good start there.
That's where we used to be.
Is that right?
Right.
Well, I'm assuming--
I think so.
We're making progress.
Absolutely. But one thing I really want to highlight about the difficulty and the challenges that you guys have overcome is that you're not among the three hundred in the country, but you're only the second bicycle-friendly suburb in the state of Minnesota, and one of a very select few bicycle-friendly suburbs in America. And suburbs have unique challenges when it comes to making a place that's really accessible, and you've done that well. And this photo is from our Bikeable Community Workshop, where we had great attendance. I think Chad was there for a part of the time, or all day as well. We had representation from Ear Parks. Ann is in the picture there, Community Services, and I even see a familiar face up there. Josh was a great voice. But, you know, the point of that, and I think the reflection back goes back to your biggest key to success, and that is effective collaboration. You know, doing the application itself kind of got kicked off by your work through Bloomington Public Health and the statewide health improvement program, doing Active Living this round, but there is work being done in the background by dedicated staff who had been around, and that was picked up by Mark Nolan here, and by the great members of Bike Edina Task Force, now Bike Edina. Jennifer is here, Lori's here. Other members of Bike Edina, can you want to stand up for a second, be recognized? It's because of you guys that the success has happened. You've been working really hard for this. But you've also got great political leadership. I said Josh was at the workshop, but also Mary came out for a while as well, and I know that you've been involved in other bike-friendly projects since then. One of the biggest best-practice things, it sounds really simple, let's make sure that we fund our values and fund active living. Most communities don't do this in any meaningful way, and you took that step by the Pedestrian and Cycling Safety Fund to make sure that you have dedicated funding, to focus on your goals, and to complete your bicycle master plan, which was one of the most comprehensive bike plans in the country for a city of almost any size at the time, and still today remains one of the best out there. Last year, this body passed a really great living streets policy that, and you're now working on implementation, that is going to help make all modes of transit-- of all modes of transportation equally represented and have access and mobility around town. You guys are very unique here, and I love that you don't have safe routes to school. You have active routes, and that's great, too. So you're putting together an active routes plan that also involves some education as well, and that is really exciting. You also have stuck your neck out there and taken some risks to do what have been some really cool, but sometimes controversial, innovative on-street projects, and everybody that's been around knows what those are, and some of them, you know, there was a test period, and you tested them out, and you learned something from them, and other ones have worked out great, and they're here today, and you have some of the best stuff that's on-street using your existing infrastructure and small funding to do it. Nine Mile Creek is not one of those small-funded projects. It's something that's going to draw people from around the metro, around the state, but most importantly, be something that everybody, all your citizens, get to use every day, and hopefully will see the numbers and beyond what the Midtown Greenway sees today. And lastly, you've got momentum. I think the best days are yet to come for Edina, and I feel very fortunate that, unlike Steve, I don't have to travel the whole country, and I'm very nearby, and I look forward to working with you guys on more active transportation. And I'd like to congratulate the mayor and the council, and present you guys with Steve, this Bicycle Friendly Community Award.
All right, Paul Austin.
Another photo opportunity.
Can you get your ass up there, too? And you have to be--
Yes.
We've got an even bigger group this time. Jennifer, can you angle in a little bit? There we go. Okay. Steve, can you hold your sign down just a little there? We've got--
Got it. Woo! Thank you.
Hold on just a minute. Nick, thank you for those very complimentary words, and one of the comments you made made me think of setting our community up with retrofitting of a ten miles of bikeway, and we had the experiment, as you call it, or hiccup, on Wooddale Avenue, and I still remember Steve down at--
At the church?
At Wooddale Church, down there one evening with me, and weathered the storm, and we got that issue fixed, and I think we're getting a lot of good acceptance in the community now. I see more and more biking all the time. They're really using the system. So thank you so much for your guidance when you were at TLC. Wish you the best in this new job, traveling the country, doing what you do so well. And Nick, thanks for the, again, for the very kind words. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right.
Send us reports.
Send us reports from the cusp of innovation. Send them back to Edina.
I will.
Okay.
I'll be back to do a bike-friendly visit here and help you get to silver, okay?
All right, yeah, thanks. That's a great idea. All right, I don't see our sheriff rushing in. Reschedule.
Reschedule.
Oh, reschedule, okay. So we were going to have Sheriff Richard Stanek here to give us an annual update, and he will be rescheduling. So we will move into the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have one public hearing this evening. Director Milner has this matter, and it is a request for consideration of a vacation of a public right-of-way on a portion of West 67th Street. Director Milner.
Mayor, members of the council, Chad Milner, Director of Engineering. The public hearing in front of you for this resolution is for the vacation of public right-of-way for West 67th Street. It's included in Resolution 2014-61. It's located next to Xerxes Avenue on the extension of 67th Street on this hatched area shown on this graphic, just east of York Avenue. This is the boundary survey provided by the applicant for the proposed description, right there near Xerxes Avenue with that extension of 67th Street. So the history, the city council, Edina City Council, in October 18th, 1965, already vacated this right-of-way. In March of this year, the Hennepin County Examiner of Titles Office found that that 1965 description was vague, and they're unable to clear those titles for the development in that area. So staff's recommending that council approve the resolution tonight to clear the description in that resolution. So I'll stand for any questions on that.
Member Bennett?
Question either for Director Milner or Attorney Knutson, or perhaps both, and that is, we've had discussions in other areas about the desirability of preserving a transportation right-of-way, and I know that during the public hearing for this matter, there was a lot of concern raised from residents about how movement was going to be through a site to a larger public area. And I am wondering, first of all, even whether or not we could retain, for instance, ten feet for transportation right-of-way at this point in procedural history, but also whether there is desirability to do so, again, for that standpoint of preserving public access through superblocks.
I can't answer the legality of the question, but I know in our development review of the project, there's sidewalks shown all around this property to provide that sort of access that you're discussing.
Right, and it's my understanding that they'll be under private ownership, not public.
Correct.
So I guess then my question is for Director Teagan, for Attorney Knutson.
Counsel, in 1965, you already almost vacated it, so the legal description was defective, but right now you certainly could not go and occupy that property because you, for the most part, vacated it. And if they started a quiet title action or something, or you tried to move in there, we would not have the right, clearly, to do that. This just cleans up a mistake that was made twenty years ago.
So it's actually more the nature of a technical correction. And again, my question was not about occupancy or use, other than for a transportation right-of-way.
You really couldn't use it.
Okay.
This cleans up a technical issue.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have a question on this matter? All right, this is a public hearing. I'm going to open it up for public testimony. If anyone's interested, please come forward, and we will take that testimony. You'll have three minutes. Anyone care to testify regarding this matter? Good evening, welcome. And your name and address, and then you'll get a little yellow light when you've got thirty seconds left, so.
My name is Jim Halverson, living at 6700 Xerxes Avenue, where we've been for sixty-two years. And we are, as far as we're concerned, half owners of 67th Street, which was vacated in 1965, I think is correct, and paying taxes and maintaining that road all these years. And I'm just wondering what the consequences of this action tonight would be.
All right, we'll get an answer to that question, Mr. Halverson. Thank you. Anyone else?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion on that issue? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. And then to Mr. Halverson's question about the consequences for him, he feels like he's had significant interest here. I think it's a property interest with respect to his residing at 6700 Xerxes Avenue. Attorney Knutson, would you care to comment?
Mayor, members of the council, we are vacating-- What you're asked to do tonight is complete the vacation, if you will, of the easement. We're not deciding who owns what. We're just vacating our interest in the easement.
All right, so what would be the next step for Mr. Halverson if he wants to resolve who owns what portion of that vacated easement, assuming we do that?
If he thinks he has an ownership interest, then he can talk to the other folks who think they own it, or he can start a legal action. I would suggest he talk to a private attorney to assert his rights if he thinks he has rights in that.
All right. Could you hear that, Mr. Halverson?
Yes, sir.
You should, yeah, seek private real estate attorney's advice, or some attorney's advice on with regard to your interest in the property, because we're just vacating, proposing to vacate our interest.
Well, I didn't understand if it's vacating just the easement or the whole transfer title.
Mayor, members of the council, we're not transferring title. All we're doing is giving up the interest the city may have in this piece. We're not saying who owns it. That's not for us to decide. That's our court. That goes to that.
But the interest that we're vacating is in the form of a right-of-way.
It's in the form of an easement.
Or an easement.
Yes, we're giving up our easement rights.
All right. We're not transferring title, Mr. Halverson. We're just giving up our easement rights, so you'll still have to resolve that issue with your neighbors. You might be able to do it by stipulation. I don't know what you would suggest, or you both see-- Anyone who's interested ought to see a private attorney, I guess, is the key.
That would be my advice, Mayor.
Yeah, all right. Thanks for coming over this evening. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'll move.
Second.
I'm second.
Got a motion and a second to vacate the public right-of-way on the portion of West 67th Street embodied in Resolution 2014-61. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carried. All right, now we are on to community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter that is not on the agenda this evening? And you'll have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Frank Lorenz, 7501 York Avenue South. I was, I made my right turn off of 66th Street onto France Avenue.
Okay.
And then it took me 35 minutes before I could get onto the on-ramp westbound on Highway 62.
On France or on Penn?
No.
You were northbound on what?
I was, I made my right turn off of 66th Street onto France Avenue.
Okay.
And then it took me 35 minutes before I could get onto the on-ramp westbound on Highway 62. I called a police lieutenant for the city who's in charge of traffic and asked him if he had any interns, or unsworn officers, or sworn officers that could direct traffic during rush hour. And the answer was no. Unfortunately, Minnesota, the brainpower state, apparently does not have a surplus of people who understand what the left turn on green arrow means, among other things. But this is going to go on for months. I have to take the lieutenant at his word. But I believe this project is being run by Mendat. However, France Avenue is a county road, so, you know, everybody but Fibber McGee has got some fingers in the pie. When Mendat redid the bridge across for Penn Avenue last year, it took months. You know, if Mendat was managing human pregnancies, they would be 18 months long. Penn Avenue was finished three months before they opened it, and it wasn't left closed to let the concrete girders that were precast dry, if you know what I mean. So, Mendat has no sense of urgency on this. And I'm wondering whether Mendat or Hennepin County has some interns, or some group of people that don't necessarily carry guns, but could be sworn to direct traffic, to get the traffic moving, and get people to take the left turns, or whatever that they're entitled to do. Assuming that the city has done anything or everything that they can, perhaps the mayor or the city manager can contact the county or the state and find out. Because left to their own devices, drivers have no idea what to do. And I have no, you know, the same congestion occurs on Penn Avenue now, because it's picking up the slack for the absence of Xerxes. The other suggestion or question, I spoke to the city manager last week, or two weeks ago by phone, and the subject was need for more parking at the 50th and France retail complexes. My, I understand it briefly. You have about 650 spaces, plus or minus, and 250 of them are occupied by employees that work at the retail complex. There's a need for more consumer parking. The Edina-based merchants want it to be free, but that means that the Minneapolis merchants on the east side of France Avenue get a free ride. And I believe that you and the city, the mayor and the city manager have tried to do a joint powers agreement with them some years ago, and they said, why? Which is nice. But is there any possibility that you could organize a robust rideshare program for the employees that work in that area? And by robust, I mean Minnesota rideshare topped up by some kind of city incentive for the driver, more money for gas and oil and whatever. Because four car, four people or five people per car instead of one would free up several hundred spaces out of the 250 for customers.
All right. Mr. Lorenz, I'd let you drift on quite a bit there. I got you. I think I've got your two points. I will talk to the city manager about this traffic issue at France and the crosstown relative to county participation and try to do something about that.
Or Mendat employees, whatever.
Yeah, whatever we can do there, inter-jurisdictionally. And then we've had this conversation about 50th and France parking. We'll take you that advice to heart, too, and see if that has any traction. Thank you. We'll talk to the 50th and France Business Association about that idea. Thank you. Anyone else for a community comment? All right. We're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. First matter, there is a second reading on an ordinance amendment allowing R1, R2, and PRD1 property to be considered as part of a planned unit development. And Director Teague, you have this matter?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Before you is the second reading of ordinance that would allow R1, R2, and PRD2 properties to be considered for PUD rezoning. This is the result of the Lennar Project on York that includes some R1 properties. Since the first reading included in your packet, I've provided some additional information minutes from the Planning Commission discussion. I also included and laid out before you this evening a survey of other cities that show, there are 17 cities here that all use a PUD. One item of note is St. Louis Park uses the PUD, but they don't allow it in their R1 districts. All other cities allow PUD to be utilized within all of their zoning districts. So, just pass that along for additional information. And again, the Planning Commission recommended, recommends approval of this ordinance on a four-to-one vote, and the council approved it on first reading with a four-to-one vote as well. And with that, I can turn it back to the council for discussion.
All right. Any questions for Director Teague? Member Brindle?
Looking at the ordinance amendment, the title of it says, Planned Unit Development applicability in the R1, R2, and PRD1 district. Do we have R2? I was, I guess I thought all our residential was R1.
We do. The R2 district, they are where we have duplexes. They're scattered around the city mainly, mainly on collector or arterial roadways.
Okay. Okay. I didn't realize that was a different classification. Thank you.
All right. Member Bennett?
Director Teague, a couple of questions. I noticed in the report of the discussion from March 10th, 2010, that was the date on the notes, Planning Commission Working Group. It could have been notes from discussion on February 10th, 2010, that now Chair Staunton of the Planning Commission referred to a variety of PUDs with different thresholds and triggers. And since he has familiarity with that in his role as city attorney for the city of Excelsior, as well as other work he's done, and then the question also relates to the materials that are just on our desk this evening, which is the Minnetonka PUD ordinance. With the 17 cities, and specifically with the Minnetonka ordinance, what, do you know what Chair Staunton's reference was to different thresholds and triggers? And does it refer to different thresholds and triggers with respect to different base zoning? I do note that, for instance, St. Louis Park has a one-acre minimum in addition to their restriction of PUD not allowed in R1 or R2 districts. And I know that in looking at the Planning Commission and Working Group minutes, there was discussion, they started out with a minimum acreage that was later dropped, and again, coupled with that bar from R1 and R2. So, could you please speak to your familiarity with use of different thresholds or triggers? And could you please point me to page number for the Minnetonka ordinance, so that I can see what they do with respect to applying PUD to residential property?
Yeah. I don't recall the specific discussion back in 2010 with Commissioner Staunton at that time. It may have been in our discussion about different lot sizes. We did discuss that, having a minimum lot size. In regard to the Minnetonka ordinance...
Yeah, the minimum was actually proposed. It was later dropped, and there was some discussion. I mean, the comment specifically was that variety of PUDs with different thresholds and triggers. And then other people, Commissioner Schroeder also referred to that. And so, I'm just asking, what would be some examples of those different thresholds and triggers? Would there be a differentiation made? I see that we also have the City of Eagan's code. Again, these materials here this evening, so have not seen them before. But with that variety, is some of that variety represented in the materials in front of us this evening so that we can see? And is some of that variety used to, in fact, differentiate between types of properties with respect to their base zoning?
Some of the different triggers would be affordable housing, using sustainable design principles, pedestrian-friendly. Those were some of the triggers that we were discussing when looking at a PUD that would allow someone to pursue the PUD. In regard to some of those other cities, you can note that Apple Valley, for instance, has a 20-acre minimum. So, they were looking at PUD in terms of larger tracts of land. Some cities have smaller. St. Louis Park has the one-acre minimum. Minneapolis, one acre as well. New Brighton, two acres.
So, in fact, of the 17 cities, roughly, roughly a quarter, I see Cottage Grove has a 10-acre minimum. So, again, with this table just in front of us this evening, it looks like quite a few of the cities, and then you also have mentioned more than I'm seeing here, actually have an acreage minimum that they use, which could differentiate between types of properties.
They could, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? We've been through this on a first reading basis. I wonder if we could entertain a motion on a second reading basis?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second to approve ordinance 2014-10 on a second reading basis. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Nay.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. And next matter before us on reports and recommendations is a proposed ordinance 2014-9, which concerns the operation of bicycles, or potential operation of bicycles on sidewalks. And Manager Neal would like to kind of frame this issue for us a little bit more effectively.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. What we have for you tonight is something we don't usually have for you, and that is two points of view from city staff. We have one point of view that Mr. Nolan will be presenting that comes from the ETC, and it has to do with allowing bicycles to be operated on our sidewalks. Following Mr. Nolan's presentation, we'll have a short presentation from Chief of Police, Dave Nelson. And he's going to provide you some input from the police department that does not advocate for changing the current ordinance. We don't often bring these kind of issues to you in this format, so I wanted to provide that kind of extra context for you. We think it's important that you hear all sides of this issue, consider all sides of the issue. And really, I think while you're listening to the presentations, I think ask yourself, what is the, what is the issue? What is the problem we're trying to solve? What is the issue we're trying to address with the proposed change in ordinance? With that, I'll...
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, take it away. Mr. Nolan?
Thank you, Manager Neal. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here.
Okay. All right. We're good? Thank you very much. We are here to discuss, as Mayor Hovland said, the ordinance change or modifications, proposed modifications to allow cycling on sidewalks. As you're well aware, the current city ordinance prohibits cycling on sidewalks, and we're here to discuss that matter. And just a quick summary, we'll talk briefly about the active routes to school recommendations that recommend changing the ordinance. Same goes for the Transportation Commission's advisory communication, which was included in the packet, the engineering staff recommendations, and then briefly go over the ordinance itself. So, as stated before, the Active Routes to School Plan was presented to council in draft form on February 3rd. And out of that meeting, council had asked that this matter be taken up, and was taken up by the Transportation Commission after that. I would like to say that the final plan will be presented to council for approval on June 17th. That's the plan right now. And in that plan, you may recall that the recommendations for the city included the following recommendation to modify city ordinance language to allow bicycling on sidewalks. And I'm not going to read through this in its entirety, but basically what it's saying is that doing this will increase and improve the safety and comfort of children and all riders in the city. Most Minnesota municipalities do not prohibit cycling on sidewalks, except in high pedestrian areas and central business districts. And as well as changing the ordinance, will allow for bicycling on sidewalks, subject to several conditions, including yielding to pedestrians, riding at lower speeds, and not riding on sidewalks where posted. So, as stated, the Transportation Commission took this matter up. They actually initially considered this modification back in fall of 2012, and voted to send the advisory communication to council at that time. However, that was later pulled from consideration. And so, coming out of the request from council, the ETC reconsidered this at their February and March meetings of this year, and in April approved recommending changing the ordinance to allow bicycling on sidewalks, and voted to send that advisory communication to council. And the engineering staff recommendations supports modifying city ordinance for the reasons stated in the advisory communication. It's a very thorough piece of work. Engineering staff feels that this modification is in line with our living streets policy, talking about creating facilities in a place and streets and public realms that are for all users of all abilities. It's also recommended in the Active Routes to School Plan, as we stated. We are currently or just beginning work on an educational safety campaign, and city staff feels like that educational safety campaign would be much more effective if we're allowed to tell folks how to ride safely on sidewalks, and we feel we can't do that now, given that it's not legal. And it also listed half a dozen cities, neighboring cities, currently that permit bicycling on sidewalks in their city code. And a couple of these don't have specific codes addressing this, but then that defers to the state ordinance, which allows cycling on sidewalks. We would like to recognize that the Edina Police Department doesn't support this, as Manager Neal stated. And so, when I'm finished, Chief Nelson will talk about the viewpoints from the police department's perspective. And this is the proposed ordinance. So, looking at Sections 24 and 26, as stated, bicycles by code are considered vehicles. So, inserting the word motor before vehicle in those two sections will allow bicycles to be operated on sidewalks. And then a new section of that ordinance shown on this slide will allow persons to operate bicycles on sidewalks, including in a business district, subject to the following requirements in addition to those found in state statutes. So, a bicyclist may ride at a speed no greater than is reasonable, and at no time greater than 10 miles per hour, slow to a walking pace when pedestrians are present, or when crossing driveways or intersections, enter driveways or intersections only when clear of traffic, not ride on sidewalks where the entrance or exit of a building abuts the sidewalk, and not riding on sidewalks where posted. I don't know if we would like Chief Nelson to approach, or if you'd like to ask questions now?
Stand for questions, Mr. Nolan. Member Swenson?
I'd look through that part, but I didn't search anything else. What happens with the motorized wheelchair?
That's, that's a good question. We'll have to take that into consideration, given that it is, it's a motor vehicle.
I mean, I have on the sidewalks across from me two people that travel in motorized wheelchairs. So, I would never want to, it's the only safe place for them. I would not want to exclude them from being on sidewalks. So, okay.
Member Swenson, we may have someone in the galley that knows the answer to that question. Member Janneby, could you approach?
I'm thinking it was somewhere else in a rule that I can't remember.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council, Jennifer Janneby, 4016 Inglewood Avenue. My memory, and I'm just going from my memory, is that people who are using a device as a, to help them with, you know, because they can't walk, they're considered pedestrians. So, whether it's a motorized wheelchair or manual wheelchair, they're pedestrians, and so they're not vehicle drivers.
I kind of remember the discussion where we were talking about motorized scooters years ago, but I wasn't sure. I just want to make really sure that we don't do anything to mess that up.
Other questions at this point in time for Mr. Nolan? I've got one. Would you, you know, the state law does, precludes riding, operating a bicycle on a public sidewalk in a business district...
So whether it's a motorized wheelchair or manual wheelchair, they're pedestrians, and so they're not vehicle drivers.
I kind of remember the discussion where we were talking about motorized scooters years ago, but I wasn't sure. I just want to make really sure that we don't do anything to mess that up.
Other questions at this point in time for Mr. Nolan? I've got one. Would you, you know, the state law does, precludes riding, operating a bicycle on a public sidewalk in a business district. This allows that, and I'm thinking of situations on the 50th and France, busy summer evening, and somebody's trying to ride a bicycle down the street. Why was a decision made to include the business districts in, as an allowable area for operating a bicycle?
I think it was for the variety of business districts that we have here in Edina. The 50th and France area does have doors that open onto sidewalks, and so that, the ordinance in its current state does prohibit riding in areas like that. And also, we're posted, so it could be posted in the 50th and France area. And thinking of the Southdale area, for instance, along France Avenue and some other of our arterial streets around Southdale, allowing, the ordinance is written out to allow cycling on sidewalks in those locations where there aren't doors opening up onto the sidewalks, and where the roadways may not be so bicycle-friendly for some users.
It just seems like a significant onus to put on the operator of a bike, you know. Instead of just precluding them from operating a bicycle on a sidewalk in a business district, you're making distinction between whether a door opens up onto a sidewalk or not in the business district, as to whether they can or cannot ride that bicycle down the sidewalk in the business district. I just see it as a complication, anyway. So, Member Bennett, and then we'll get the chief up here.
Actually, Mayor, I think the distinction would be whether or not it's posted. And so someone wouldn't need to know the designation of the business district. They would simply need to know that they can't ride where it's posted. And so it would be the posting would be a part of the ordinance that they would be following. But I think, to the point of the recommendation, I think to prohibit it in all areas, in the Southdale area, what you're effectively doing by prohibiting bicycling on sidewalks is prohibiting people from moving freely around that area on a bicycle unless they're really, really confident in their ability to do so.
All right. Thank you. Is it necessary that the ordinance provide for the posting? Because I don't see that provided for in the ordinance, the signed posting.
It should, it is, it should be provided in, I can't pull up the-
It is.
Not ride on sidewalks where posted. There it is, the very last one. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
I'm just looking at the state statute where it does, "A person operating a bicycle on a sidewalk or across a roadway or shoulder of a sidewalk shall yield to a pedestrian. No person shall ride on a sidewalk within a business district unless permitted by local authorities." Why don't we, why don't we use the state statute and then further modify it for ourselves? Is that what we're trying to do here? Because we seem to be saying the same thing.
I believe that's true for the most part. I think we're trying to work with our existing ordinances right now, and to be able to make that simple change in order to accommodate that. But that's certainly open to discussion as well.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I guess, in looking at the material that was provided as supporting material, the Madison piece is really great. The biking on sidewalks that they put together. Madison does a lot of things right, as it relates to pedestrians and movement of people. And so whatever we end up with here, I would love a piece that does what that does. That informs the public about what they can do and how to be safe on bicycles, and pedestrians themselves, how to be safe on that sidewalk, and who can be there and who can't.
And that is part of the Transportation Commission's work plan for this year, is to have that type of education and outreach.
All right. Well, I, you know, I, from what I see here, I'm okay with it. It has, I realize it's been through a lot of consideration and time, and a lot of work. So I appreciate all of that. So we'll, we'll see what the rest of the discussion brings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're heightening the burden for the chief. You're not to be, you're quite an advocate here now to convince Member Brindle that the status quo is okay. Come on up. Let's find out what your thoughts are.
Oh, he can do it.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to talk about the police response, or the police outlook on bikes on sidewalks. So as a police officer, we frequently make statutory references, so I'm going to do that tonight, seeing as there's some in this also. But I want to start with definitions under 169.011. Definitions for subdivision 75, definition of a sidewalk. It defines a sidewalk as far as the portion of the roadway and this and that, but that's not my point. The, my point for this definition is it says it is intended for the use of pedestrians. So when state statute defined a sidewalk, that was the intended use for it. We're here tonight in potentially making this decision to allow bikes on sidewalks, and I feel it's unfortunate that we're doing this without any input from the intended users of the sidewalks, our community members, our pedestrians. We never did any type of survey to see if people would support that. So unfortunately, they don't have a voice in this. And I see a lot of people using our sidewalks as pedestrians, with their families, dogs. And I see bikes on sidewalks as being potential danger for them. So maybe this would have been a good idea for speak up Edina, where we could have put that out there, and got some feedback on it. Also, I want to reference State Statute 169.222. I think, probably have that in front of you, their operation of a bicycle. There we have all the regulations, driving regulations and all that authorized by state statute. I want to draw your attention to subdivision 4D, where it says, "Local authorities may prohibit the operation of bicycles on any sidewalk or crosswalk under their jurisdiction." Meaning that unless a municipality specifically creates an ordinance to prohibit sidewalk riding, it is legal. So, and that's in the state statute. Looking back at our ordinance, sometime maybe around 1970, when the initial ordinance was developed, the city council members at that time passed an ordinance to prohibit the operation of bicycles on sidewalks, instead of just following the state statute. Don't know what prompted that, but I would assume that it was some type of community concern. So that was back in 1970, roughly, and it's been that way ever since. You know, currently, bikes aren't allowed on sidewalks. And when a police officer sees a bicyclist on a sidewalk, that's when they can use their discretion or common sense on whether or not they feel they need to address that behavior. Are there other people around? Is it unsafe? Should the officer pull over and tell the person, you know, get off the sidewalk? Ordinance prohibits it. Or do they just let it go? Most of the times, if there's no one around, if there's no one else using the sidewalk at the time, they're not going to address the situation. They're just going to let it go. So I understand this topic originally came up in 2012. Former police chief Jeff Long had some communications, and he opposed the bikes on sidewalks. As it has come to life again, I've received the data from Sergeant Olson, who is our traffic sergeant, who did a lot of the research and provided information to Chief Long on results of studies and that. So I wanted to run through a few studies that we came across. In reviewing data, we started looking at the City of Edina Comprehensive Bicycle Transportation Plan that was passed by city council in 2009. In Section 2, under Recommendations, on page 44, it says, "Separate cyclists from pedestrians." Cyclists and pedestrians have different travel characteristics. Mixing both types of users in the same facility increases hazards to both. Designating bicycle space in sidewalks or side pass is not recommended, as in increases the potential for crashes between bikes and pedestrians. And by making cyclists less visible to motorists, puts cyclists at a significantly greater risk of automobile crashes. On page 80, in Messages, the following message should be taught. Avoid riding on sidewalks. It is illegal in commercial districts in Minnesota, and it puts pedestrians at risk. It also makes it more difficult for motorists to see cyclists. Research demonstrates that it is, in fact, five times more dangerous than riding on the street, even in places where no bicycle facilities are provided. If you flip page 108 and 109, you got the Met Council's 2030 Transportation Plan. It talks about bike paths, shared use, or multi-use trails. I kind of looked at this, by allowing the bikes onto the sidewalks with the pedestrians, we are converting our sidewalks to multi-use trails. Their recommendation to allow for safe two-way travel is to have them 12 feet in width. Most of our sidewalks in Edina are five feet or less. So it's less than half the time, or half the distance that they recommend. We also reviewed some independent published studies and articles on bike effects on sidewalks. One of them by William Mortez. He's a professor at University of Washington in Seattle. Conclusion on his studies, cycling on the sidewalk is extremely dangerous. The Cornell University Grant Study, Bicycling on Sidewalks, states bicycling user groups and public agencies alike have produced a wealth of information and literature stressing the need for bicyclists to ride on the road and not the sidewalk. National Highway Transportation Safety Administration, Sidewalk Versus Street Riding, The safest place for bicycle riding is on the street, where bicycles are expected to follow the same rules of the road as motorists and ride in the same direction. Article called Commute by Bike by Tim Grau, March 2008, he was discussing the top two least safe places for bicycles to ride. In the top two, one of them was sidewalk. In reviewing the Edina Transportation Advisory Communication, the one that I have, was dated April 23 of 2014. Made a couple of notes on reviewing that, and on page one, under Analysis, says sidewalk riding in general. The dangers of riding a bicycle on a sidewalk are well documented. On page three, there's a list of unsafe sidewalk riding behaviors that are illegal and enforceable under state statute. And then there's a list of eight references. I'm not going to go through all eight of them. I just looked at the first one. It's called Riding Recklessly on a Sidewalk. To the average person, that may sound, sounds good. The statutory reference to it is 169.13, subdivision 1A. That statute is for reckless or careless driving. It's a misdemeanor offense. Chances are your license will be suspended. We write very few tags of that nature to motorists. Where you see it quite frequently is when a person gets arrested for DWI for their first-time offense, and their attorney gets a pled down to a careless. You may hear that term quite frequently, but is that, is that what we want to be doing with the motorists, is charging them with the same level of a DWI for reckless riding on a sidewalk? I don't know. I don't think so. I, that's not my position. Of the other eight violations, most of them are violations where if you're convicted, it will go on your driving record, raise your insurance rate, and increase your chances of having your driving privileges suspended. I don't know if that's the message we want to be sending to people, and I really don't see us tagging underage or under age 16 kids with something like that, because that's going to affect whether or not they can even get their driver's license when they turn 16. Also, in that communication on page five, we got the recommendation to adopt the following ordinance. It was up on the screen there. And I just wanted to go down to the bullets where they talk about, you know, being able to ride on the sidewalks and in the business district. But it says, "Ride at a speed no greater than is reasonable and prudent under the circumstances, and in no event a speed greater than 10 miles an hour." Is the expectation, then, that law enforcement will be out trying to speed or take a laser out and measure their speed, and if they're going over 10 miles an hour, issue them a citation for that? I would hope not. But I don't know how many kids' bikes have speedometers on them to know whether or not they're speeding. So, the other one, the second one down, it says, "Slow to a walking pace when pedestrians are present." Sounds good. But looking at it from law enforcement viewpoint, my viewpoint, I'd look at it and go, so there's pedestrians walking down the sidewalk, bicyclist comes up behind them, they have to slow to a walking pace. If they do that, they'll never pass them. So we're going to end up with a bunch of people on bikes and pedestrians walking in the same direction, if you want to put that in the ordinance, anyway. Police department, in reality, we don't have the resources available to go out and enforce all the bicycle violations. And I would hope that you would not approve the ordinance with the expectation that law enforcement will be able to enforce the violations addressed in this communication. We already have a state statute that addresses this, and by adding more stipulations into the ordinance, I think it just makes it more confusing for people. So after reviewing the data provided to me, and the common theme of riding bikes on sidewalks increases the danger to bicyclists and pedestrians, I cannot stand before you and recommend the adoption of this ordinance. But I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Chief. And Member Bennett.
Thank you, Chief, for the information. And I, too, am struck with the research, and I, too, noted some of the things that you have mentioned. But one of the things I noted, and this is also fits with some other reading that I've done, the absolute safest place for a cyclist to ride is a dedicated, separated from all kinds of traffic path, right?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have the money as a city to fund them all over the city. We're trying. We're increasing. But we, if you look at a bicycle map, for instance, of Hennepin County, until the nine-mile trail has, is built, we are a great black hole in the middle of Hennepin County. So we don't have the facilities yet. We're trying to get them. We also know that bike lanes can be safer. But then we heard from your predecessor at a previous meeting, arguing against the installation of bike lanes, particularly when they were coupled with reduced speed limits. So one of my questions is, where do we want people to ride? You know, if we don't have the type of facility that's the very safest, or don't have very much of it, we have some. And we have law enforcement disfavor of some of the other facilities that we're trying to build. I just, again, my question is, and it's a serious question, where do we want people to ride? And then you mentioned enforcement, and that was your final statement, is that the burden of enforcing something, and that, I think, is one of the biggest points of what's in front of us right now, is removing from the burden of enforcement, something that, in fact, is not being enforced. You said earlier that an officer can use common sense or discretion as to whether or not to address when they, an officer sees a person riding on a sidewalk. When you see someone fail to stop at a stop sign, do you use common sense or discretion as to whether or not you will tag that violation?
Yes. I mean, and a lot of it depends on, is there other traffic around? You know, did the person slow down, and they checked for traffic, and then they rode through the stop sign?
Well, I'm talking about vehicles.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was back on.
I thought you were, so I wanted to-
Thank you.
And thank you for that clarification, because the point that I'm trying to make is, in fact, I don't think it helps the public esteem for law if they don't think that the laws mean anything. And I think that's one of the biggest problems with our bike ordinance, is we've got this ordinance, and according to our police chief, it's going to be a matter of common sense or discretion as to whether or not to address. And we know from research, I don't know what your reaction was about the research about the age of riding, the lack of, what, so in your research, what is that impact of it not really being safe for 10-year-olds to ride in a roadway, unaccompanied in a roadway?
As I say, as far as having an age limit, 10-years-old or something similar to that, to have them riding on sidewalks, we would definitely be open to that discussion, but it wasn't, wasn't obvious.
No, and it isn't. And I think because when talking about the enforcement burden, the thought of police officers carding 10-year-olds and 11-year-olds, I think, is probably more, that the police department would be more opposed to that, I would think, than, and that's why I think the speed limit made sense. Because I think that lack of surety is not just among younger people, it can be among older people, among beginning cyclists. Anyway, I mean, and I go back to that question, where would the police department like people to ride and ride safely, given the health benefits of cycling, the fact that we want to see children cycle to school, and they can, it also reduces the number of vehicles on the road? Where would you like to see cyclists ride, given the realities, the financial realities, the infrastructure realities, and where we stand in terms of build-out of the system?
I guess it depends on what type of roadway. I mean, if it's a roadway that is not heavily traveled, you know, not France Avenue and that, we'd prefer to see them ride on the right-hand side of the road. I know, and it would be tough to put this in any type of ordinance, but it would be nice if they chose to ride on a sidewalk, if one was available. I know in my neighborhood, a lot of times, people will be riding on a sidewalk, and if they're coming up on a pedestrian, they'll go down in the street and then come back up on the other side of the pedestrian in the next driveway and that, so they don't bother the pedestrian traffic. That would be very difficult to put in any type of ordinance. That would just be showing care for pedestrians. But, so what type of, I mean, when you're looking at safe routes to school, or active routes to school, I'm envisioning that there are more residential roads around schools. So I would, I would say we would prefer them to ride on the right-hand side of the road.
Actually, one of the things that's really interesting about our elementary schools is that almost all of them are located next to higher-order roads. We've noticed that was one of the particular issues with the Highlands Elementary School, and why a sidewalk was so- and why a sidewalk was so important there, because it's one of the few schools in which the buses are not turning in from a major roadway. So to your point, yes, there are lower-order streets around elementary schools, but in fact, most of our schools, up from elementary school all the way to high school, border major roads, and, and many schoolgoers have to either cross those roadways, or in fact be along them, part of their travel.
Member Brindle.
We're looking at the state statute 169.222, the operation of bicycles on sidewalks. It is legal in the state of Minnesota unless set forth in a community.
Correct.
To be prohibited to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. A person operating a bicycle on a sidewalk, across a roadway, or shoulder on a crosswalk shall yield the right-of-way to any pedestrian and shall give an audible signal when necessary before overtaking and passing any pedestrian. So, no pedestrian shall ride a bicycle on a sidewalk within a business district unless permitted by the local authorities. Local authorities may prohibit the operation of bicycles on a sidewalk or crosswalk under their jurisdiction. So, so in this, overall in the state, biking on sidewalks is allowed.
Per statute, yes.
Per statute, yes. So what other cities prohibit cycling on sidewalks? I mean, are we one of a few, are we one of many?
That I don't have an answer for, and I don't know, I know you guys did some research.
I'm just.
Okay.
I'm just curious about how it, how it came about that Edina prohibited it. Did somebody say, "This is just not compatible, we got a problem here"? There are places where it is incompatible, and that is where you've got doors opening, for sure.
Sure.
So, hence the, the no cycling in the business district, or where doors, doors abut the sidewalk, using the words of that. Of that part of the, of the language. But I'm just wondering if, particularly looking at the ability for youngsters to learn to ride and be separated from traffic, and get comfortable on their bikes, where are they going to do that, except on a sidewalk?
I would agree, and that's the best place for them.
Yeah, and so I'm wondering if we can't strike some sort of a hybrid here, where we identify areas where cycling on sidewalks is permitted, and then identify where, I guess, everywhere else it's prohibited. And then in a business district where they want to make it plain and, plain and clear that it's prohibited, but, I don't know, I mean, I see this as a place that I think our community needs to go. I think cycling on sidewalks is possibly something that, I, I don't know, I mean, I looked at this and went, well, I guess we've covered our bases with how we want people to behave here. We've got the state statute saying you've got to tell people you're there, it's etiquette, it's required to make a sound, and then we've got the ability to say not ride on sidewalks where the entrance or exit to a building abuts the sidewalk, we've got some safety measures put in place. I understand the police department wants to do something that separates pedestrians from bicycles, and I understand that Biky Dina wants to, or members of, certain members of Biky Dina, want to separate bicycles from pedestrians. But from a safety point of view, particularly for children, I, I, I see it as safer, it's the safer alternative than what we have now. So I'm, I'm kind of looking at both sides to see which one weighs more for me, if you will, and really, I think, I think it is that for me, that cycling on sidewalks, by and large, makes us a safer community.
Member Swenson.
I don't have a question for you, Chief, so I, but I do have the answer to the wheelchair thing, and it is in state statute 169.212, and Jennifer, you're basically right, it does say that a wheelchair has every right to be on a sidewalk, and, so that's already decided, so that, for me, was my biggest issue with this. I will tell you that I sat on Valley View where it goes underneath 62 yesterday, and watched a grandmother with a burly and a 10-year-old kid on a bike, and his mother behind him, trying to figure out what the heck they were going to do to go north under 62, as the exit ramp from 62 comes in right after they go under the tunnel. And they finally figured out they were going to push the button, they were going to cross over the sidewalk, to the sidewalk, the only one that's on the east side there, and they were going to go that way, which was a very smart idea, and I was applauding them for that. So I support this, and I would move this. With a waiver of second reading.
Second.
All right, further discussion, questions? I've got a few. Mr. Nolan, what's the problem we're trying to solve here?
I think one of the problems that comes to mind for me is, is trying to determine, we don't disagree with Chief Nelson's and the statistics about the, the safety issues with riding on sidewalks, and I don't, the, the ETC doesn't disagree with that either, it's right there in their advisory communication. I think it's, if we want to help educate folks how to do so safely, at least staff feels, and the Transportation Commission feels, and certainly in terms of any educational campaign that we get out there, that we can't really do that, because it's, it's not legal to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. So that, that's what comes, comes to me, and something that's forefront of my mind, is thinking about that, educating folks how to be safe, and how to ride on sidewalks, and also motorists and pedestrians, too, to be aware of each other, that's, that's, that's an issue, I think, for me. And we also had some, we've heard from parents and some high school students that have stated that the parents won't let them ride in the street, but even the students are aware they're not supposed to ride in the sidewalk, so there's some conflicts there as well, we've heard that during the active routes to school, parent surveys that we received.
All right. Was there any, was there any discussion at Biky Dina Task Force about letting children up to a certain age use the sidewalk, and then, and then after that prohibit use of the sidewalk?
I'm not sure about Biky Dina, if, there was no discussion directly related to that.
How about ETC?
ETC discussed it, but didn't talk about a specific age, other than what's listed in the, in the studies about riders under the age of 10, not having the abilities to, to be able to perceive traffic situations in the street. I know that when the Chair of the Transportation Commission, Chair Bass, met with Sergeant Olson, they did discuss this, and trying to find ways to find some common ground there, that was discussed.
Mayor, Mayor, may I please comment on that one?
Yes, you can.
We did discuss the different levels of riders, so we feel as the young people become more aware of how to ride safely, that they're eventually going to move out into the street, because that's where you're going to be able to travel safer and faster to get to your destination. So we really feel that it's going to be the people that just aren't comfortable traveling in the public right-of-way. And then also, as you get to the other end of your spectrum, the elderly that Olson don't feel comfortable any longer in that public right-of-way, will move to the sidewalks where they're traveling slowly, so that was another discussion point we had.
Member Sprague, and I've got a couple more.
We received a Bicycle Friendly Community Award tonight for bronze, and that recognizes that we stand with other cities around the country for adopting best practices to encourage biking as the easy, safe choice. And one of the practices reflected in those communities is they allow people to bike on sidewalks, and here's why. You're not building one facility, you're building a system based on the ability of the user, not the age necessarily, although younger ages do have less ability, it's an ability-based system. You need different facilities for different abilities. So people that, I have been observing biking on sidewalk in Edina, it's already a common practice all over, it's not enforced, and it's not causing any accidents, that's a fact. However, I've been looking at it to see what demographics are represented. Today I saw a 30-year-old guy who was coming under Highway 100 to that weird bike lane merge on 70th, got on the sidewalk because he didn't feel safe. I saw a person coming up to a roundabout that was in a bike lane, and got on the sidewalk to go around the roundabout. I've seen families biking together with kids, they'd be out with an age-based limit, because the parents don't meet it. I've seen elderly, I've seen everybody, because based on your ability and your perception of safety, you're going to digress and use that route. To Member Bennett's point, we don't have an off-road system, we don't have a regional trail. But we, we need a regional trail, we need sidewalks, we need low-volume bike routes, and we need dedicated bike lanes, because we need to represent all the abilities that are out there. I'm sure when this ordinance passed way back when, things were different, the philosophy was different, certainly the, the vision was different.
There were less cars.
Yeah, less cars. But times have changed, and it's time for us to, to do what should have been done long ago, to make sure that we keep moving up the ranks in adopting the best practices that will make biking the safe and easy choice for our community.
I wish I felt comfortable that this was the best practice, because one of the people that was here tonight, Steve Clark, one of the articles in the packet that we have here is Skinny on Sidewalk Riding by Steve Clark, the Bicycling and Walking Program Manager for BikeWalk Twin Cities. And here's a couple of his observations based on data. Sidewalk riding has been found to be the leading cause of bike-car crashes in most major cities. A crash analysis conducted for the city of Minneapolis in a certain period of time found that 39% of all crashes involved, involved a cyclist entering traffic from a sidewalk or a side path. This is far more crashes than occurred from bicyclists riding the wrong way on the street, 6%, or from blowing through red lights, 7.5%, or stop signs, 3.9%. Says the year that it's five times more dangerous to ride the bike on the sidewalk than it is operating a bike on the street. And there was another study by Dr. Paul Moritz that said that bike lanes were found to be twice as safe for bicyclists as a minor street, and 10 times safer than sidewalks. So, you know, I come back to this issue of, what's the problem we're trying to address here, and what is the, what is the safest thing to do here? I have some concern about little kids not being able to ride the bike on the, on the sidewalk, I think, I think it's really a complaint-driven sort of ordinance, it's kind of like parking your car for over six hours in the winter time. You know, most of the time it gets let go unless somebody complains, I can't see people complaining about the kids, but nonetheless, I'd be willing to think about some age limitation. I don't like the idea of bicycles on the, on the sidewalks in commercial districts for any reason, I think it's a big mistake. I think I remember a couple of years ago being down at 50th and France on a summer night, and having some guy try to ride his bike down in front of Motzamia through a big crowd and a bunch of sidewalk diners, I just think that's a big mistake. So I've got some real concerns about this, and whether we should survey folks on it through Speak Up Edina, I'm not sure, but those are, those are the concerns I have.
Well, to one of your concerns, they would not be able to ride past Motzamia.
Yeah, it would be posted up, but you think that's, I mean, this, they've made this, this is so complex.
It's prohibited, it's prohibited right there.
Because there's an entry.
There's an entry. But I guarantee you, they'll do it anyway. They'll, I think the simple, the point I'm trying to make is, that instead of having all these exceptions from the rule, or stating the circumstances under which you, you cannot, you know, ride your bike in a commercial district, why not just a straight ban from riding a bike in a commercial district? Why would you want to let somebody ride a bike in a commercial district?
Well, that is what the state statute says.
I agree. It's the simplest way to do it, it's the cleanest way to do it. I also frankly don't understand what riding at speed no greater than is reasonable and prudent, prudent under the circumstances. I have no idea what that means, and if we're concerned about enforcement, I think we've just exacerbated our problems with enforcement. We have all kinds of people complaining right now about we don't stop bikes at, blow through stop signs on the street. And now we're going to add all these different permutations about when or when not, when you, when you can or when you cannot do something? So I just have too many concerns about this right now. So, anyway, we've got a motion of the second, a waiver of second reading requested, so. Any better comment? All right. Roll call.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
No. Matter passes. All right, we are on to the next matter, which is potential passage of ordinance 2014-8 concerning on-sale liquor licenses with amusement devices. Mr. Newendorf.
Yes, good evening. Before I get started, there is a presentation that, we can get hooked up. Good evening, this evening I'm introducing the first reading of ordinance 2014-8. This ordinance addresses the combination of on-sale liquor licenses with amusement devices in our PCD III zones. Who's the presentation? There we go. This evening we're joined by representatives from Simon Properties, the owners of the Southdale Shopping Center, as well as representatives from Dave &amp; Buster's. For several, several years now, the owners of the Southdale Center have looked at various ways to reactivate the third floor of the shopping center. It's currently mostly vacant, there's a couple of small tenants up there, but it's been a struggle to find the right combination, the right tenant to put up on that third level. The use that seems to be the best fit for that space is a new restaurant entertainment concept. Representatives from Dave &amp; Buster's are here tonight, they're highly interested in locating in Edina, bringing their product here to the area, and strongly interested in locating in Southdale Center. One thing stands in the way, and that is some of the ordinances here in the city of Edina, where we have restrictions on the combination of on-sale liquor licenses in facilities that have games, amusements. So this evening, representatives from both the shopping center and from the proposed tenant will give presentations about their, their ideas, their suggestions. The ordinance itself addresses change, and recommends changes to Edina's ordinance to allow this type of use under specific conditions. Staff recommends that the city council amend our code to allow this type of business to grow and prosper here in Edina. This business type appeals to a wide variety of customers, from couples, singles, families and friends. It appeals to a younger demographic that is current, that is currently served at the Southdale Center. And it, it creates a destination that serves both local residents, as well as draws customers from throughout the area. There's a number of, of good reasons why staff supports this, I'll leave, I'll leave that up to the proponent, proponents to really describe their, their business model for you. So at this time, I'll introduce John Phipps from Simon Properties, and then he'll, he'll inter, introduce our representatives from Dave &amp; Buster's.
Thank you, Mr. Newendorf. Mr. Phipps, welcome.
Thank you. To be back, Mayor, members of the council, and the staff. So I'm here tonight with Ben Martin, the mall manager, to support the change in the ordinance, and to say that we think Dave &amp; Buster's is a good fit for the mall. As you know, historically, we've had a difficult time leasing that part of the mall, it's a partial second level, other than the Macy's level up there, it's, it's unanchored, there's no direct access to parking, so it's been plagued with these, these things that would inhibit a, a traditional retail shop to go up there. We tried a food court, and it, that didn't take either. So, you know, over time, since we've been here, and we've been talking about redeveloping the mall, we have tried, we investigated several alternatives, some of those with the city, and nothing, you know, again, we, we couldn't find a way to lease it, and the conclusion we reached is that what we really need in that space is a destination retailer, because it is, it's a kind of a destination space, you have to want to go there, rather than be walking through the mall and you see a tenant, and you want to stop in. And we think Dave &amp; Buster's fits the bill, but it's really more. And we think Dave and Buster's fits the bill, but it's really more than just filling space for us. We think, we believe in the Dave and Buster's concept. It's something that's not currently offered in the mall right now. It's, it's a family-friendly environment and it's just another reason, another dimension to the mall for people to come, to, to come to the mall and to stay longer. So, we believe in the concept. This is our twelfth store in our portfolio. We're talking to them about a couple of other stores. One just opened down in Florida and we're willing to invest money in the concept and we want to do more business with them in the future. So, basically, you know, Ben and I are here to answer questions after a presentation, but, you know, we would appreciate your favorable consideration of the ordinance change to allow this to happen.
Members, excuse me, Member Swenson.
Do all your Dave and Buster's have the same format and the same rules or do some of them have different formats or, or rules in your different malls?
I will, as far as the formatting, I can, I'll leave that to, to Jill and Lisa, but basically, we, we have Dave and Buster's across all our platforms. We have them somewhere outlet centers, we have them in malls, we have them in our Mills Centers, and I know Dave and Buster's are in other malls that aren't, that aren't Simon malls. But I think they're, you know, they've, they've done a good job reinventing themselves and I think their format's basically the same. I mean, there's gonna be, depending on the configuration of the space, the layout's gonna be different. They can elaborate on that. I mean, this isn't a traditional space. That's part of the reason why it's been so hard for us to get, you know, someone to, to take it. But, so, you know, the layout of the thing, I think, will depend on the, you know, the configuration.
I have another question.
Member Sprague.
So, you have this business at twelve different locations. Are any of those more upscale malls? I know you said outlet and mill. I'm not exactly sure what the differences are.
I mean, the, the outlet centers are more of, I mean, they have more outlet, tenants will have outlet concepts. The Mills are, are, you know, they're good, good, they're, they're no better, no worse. They're not luxury concepts, but they have a lot of the same tenants. And then, you know, our, our malls are about the same. So I'd say, you know, they're on par.
Thank you.
Member Brindle.
Couple of things for some clarification. The picture that we see here is of an outdoor entrance to a Dave and Buster's. I know that I've had similar conversations, but on the record, the access to Dave and Buster's at Southdale is gonna be from within the mall?
Correct.
And in, how many of the other twelve Simon malls that have a Dave and Buster's have an exterior entrance?
This is, they all have exterior entrances.
Okay, so this one's unique?
Yes, and it's, it's a unique property, it's a unique space, and yes, so this one is unique. Again, Jill and Lisa can speak to other malls, but they, where they have units, not Simon malls, where the, the access may be similar or analogous to this.
Okay, all right. In the ordinance itself, there are a couple of, couple of questions that, that I posed today. Do we know that a person cannot win more than ten dollars' worth of redemption in a single play? And I'd, I'd like to know how, how that's controlled because that's what we say in the, in the ordinance is that they, they're not gonna win more than ten dollars' worth of tickets.
That might be a better question for the Dave and Buster's.
Right, and.
Is that a Mr. Phipps?
Do you want me to wait on it then?
I think so. I think wait until they make their presentation, then you can.
All right.
Questions are late to them.
Okay.
I don't, I think it would be difficult for Mr. Phipps to answer that question.
I could hazard a guess, but that's probably not what you want.
All right, that's fine, I can do that.
He's never won over ten dollars.
I never have. Yeah, I can attest to that.
He's never won over five.
That's right.
All right, yep, I can hold those questions then. All right, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, I'll turn it over to Jill Valkovic and Lisa Warren, both with Dave and Buster's.
Mr. Phipps, one more question from Member Sprague.
You made a transformative investment of over fifteen million into the common areas in conjunction with a city loan of five million. How has the vacancy rate been affected since the renovation and how will this project impact that even further?
I can tell you that our occupancy has gone up. I may defer to Ben as to actually how it has gone up. You'll, you'll see new tenants there. And this is a big space, so this is gonna obviously positively impact that, that occupancy rate. But as, as far as specific percentages, Ben, do you have any?
I don't have, Ben, I'm on Southdale Center.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I don't have exact percentages in front of me, however, I can say that it's significantly impacted our occupancy for the better. And the portion of the center where we're attempting to put this use into is our most challenged section. We've established nearly full occupancy in our main wing of the mall. However, the secondary wing adjacent to Macy's has been extremely challenging and we expect that this use would really help us bring that side of the mall to full, so.
So would this, would this bring you close to full occupancy in the mall?
It would bring us very close, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies, introduce yourselves as you come up, it would be helpful, and give us your business address too, please.
Okay. Lots of props here. Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Lisa Warren. I'm a vice president of development with Dave and Buster's. Our address is twenty-four eighty-one Manana Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-zero. I have several menus here that I wanted to hand out so that as we go through the presentation, you can refer to them. Is it okay if I hand those and you all pass them around?
If you hand them to the clerk, she'll pass them right down to us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I'm not certain of my setup here. To click the slides, do I just click the buttons here?
The arrows.
The arrows, okay. And I've got a microphone and clicks and notes. Okay, so I'll do the best that I can. Tonight, we want to speak to you about a couple of different things about our concept, a little bit about our company history, what we offer our guests when you come to experience Dave and Buster's. My colleague Jill Valkovic is gonna talk a little bit deeper about our amusement side of our business and also our daily operations and house policies. So we appreciate your time, we appreciate your consideration this evening. So one of the first questions that I usually get asked about Dave and Buster's, I'm clicking arrows. Okay, so these arrows here, all right. So now I have a fourth prop, which is a mouse, so again, you're testing all my skills. And so one of the first questions we get is, is there a Dave and is there a Buster? And yes, two gentlemen from Little Rock, Arkansas, founders of our organization. Dave loves all things fun and games and Buster's, Buster loves all fine food and drink. And these two gentlemen had an individual business, Buster had a restaurant and Dave had a billiards and arcade hall, and their establishments were located across the parking lot from one another. And what they noticed was that their guests would come and put their name on the wait list at Buster's, and then they'd walk over to Dave's and play games while they waited for their table. And therein sort of gave them the idea of the concept of Dave and Buster's. So in nineteen eighty-two, they moved to Dallas and they opened the first integrated Dave and Buster's. And since that time, the company's been growing by leaps and bounds. We've got over ten thousand employees at this time, and as of our recent opening that we were speaking of, we're just at about seventy restaurants. So even from the time of this presentation, we've grown since then. You can see that we have a good, strong national presence in most major markets. We talked about our partnership with Simon and that our latest opening gives us an even dozen, but we've got more projects in the works. So we've got a good track record for both freestanding sites as well as mall and different One of the things I wanted to point out is that we do, and a little bit to the question that was asked earlier, all of what we build at each locations offers the same thing to our guests in that we have a full restaurant, bar, amusements, and the essence of Dave and Buster's is the same in each location. But the size and configuration of locations will differ. And so these next few slides that I'm gonna show you is just really to illustrate a couple of things. One, that we do have a flexible format, which we think is a strength to take us to different types of locations, but also that through our branding cues on the exterior, and then when you look at our interior, that we're able to be a consistent brand but often adapt to local markets and make ourselves unique to different marketplaces. So you can see here on the left, we have examples of a couple of freestanding locations, and on the right, how we've taken some of those same elements and adapted them to mall situations. Again, here is a location in Dallas, Texas, of a different size, about forty thousand square feet, also freestanding. And here is an inline location of about thirty thousand square feet in Boise, Idaho. This is a forty thousand square foot location in Virginia Beach, again, an inline location at a mall, but you can start to see that the branding elements remain the same so that it's a signature look and we're recognizable to everyone regardless of the different location. Another mall in Albany, New York, and a freestanding location in Livonia, Michigan. So a couple of things that we try to do is to be signature and recognizable both in the day and at night. At night, it's really done through lighting and some special elements. And here, I want you to notice in this picture that we've got a new logo. This is something that we're in the process of rolling out and we would want to bring this new logo to the Edina location to be part of the first wave of our newest look and feel. From a marketplace standpoint and from a competitive landscape, from a, from consumers' time, we are usually competing for a night out at Dave and Buster's or a night of, say, dinner and a movie. We enjoy a unique place as far as competition goes because we don't really have a direct head-to-head competitor. You can see that guests really rate us high on being both different but a place they enjoy, but there's no one in the marketplace right now that offers exactly what we do. From a customer and sales standpoint, we've got some facts here to try to give you an overview. An average store for us will do nine to ten million dollars a year in revenue. We're very heavy on the weekends, about seventy percent of our revenue will be done between Friday afternoon to Sunday afternoon, so, and our heaviest times from that five to nine window as well. We're pretty evenly split from a gender perspective, appealing to both males and females. We skew a little bit heavy towards adults over families, but this will change if you look, depending on what time of day or what day of the week. So Saturday afternoon, of course, is gonna be much heavier with families than a Friday evening, for example.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
With respect to your store up in Maple Grove, you've got the, your national data here in terms of you being forty percent family, sixty percent adults, what's that ratio up in Maple Grove, do you know?
I don't have a demographic split, but given, so I don't have the exact numbers on that. I do have the comparison on revenue and food and beverage, that the national numbers are very consistent to Maple Grove.
I was more interested in the family adult split.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have.
Because I think, I think there's a significant family element up in Maple Grove, as I recall.
Yeah, my hunch is that it would be higher.
Yeah, and would you define family too for us? Define family for us, please.
Children under the age of eighteen. I don't know how many. So, parents with children under the age of eighteen.
Are we talking fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen? Are we talking nine, ten, twelve? Are we talking eight, ten?
The whole, yes, the whole range.
Okay.
We feel like one of the things that makes us unique is the fact that we do offer what we call a three-in-one combination under one roof. We speak to it often as eat, drink, play. And play has a couple of different meanings, whether it's you're playing the games in the amusement area, or you're there to watch a sporting event, or you're there socializing with friends. So again, we think that this combination of eat, drink, play makes us highly unique and appealing, as well as what we call our special events. So this is the part of our business where you can make a reservation for a larger group. And this spans from kids' birthday parties of all ages to a corporate event, to a high school group buying, buying out for a lock-in after prom, so all kinds of anniversary celebrations and all kinds of sizes of groups. So this is a dedicated part of our business. We have dedicated space in our floor plan for reservation parties of all different sizes. We've wanted to be in the Edina market for quite a while. We've been looking since two thousand and six. We're very excited about the opportunity at Southdale. We feel like it's a great fit for our brand, for our guests, and another partnership with Simon. You can see here, and of course, you all know why Edina is such an attractive market, but we do feel like it's a great match for our guests and for our brand. The proposed site location that we've talked about is at Southdale Center. It's on the third level, right there between Macy's on the third level. And we've done an initial study of, so we call this can we fit plan. This is a unique sized and configuration of space, and so we've done a little bit of work early on to just make sure that we feel like we've got the square footage to do our layout and offer some unique elements that are, would be new to this location relative as a comparison to the Maple Grove location. So just as a point of orientation, where I've got the label entry, those are the escalators that come up to that third level, if any of you are that familiar with the, with the mall layout. How we have it configured right now is you would come up and you can see that small desk that's at the top of the escalator, and that would just be your initial host desk and where you would be received. Straight behind there is the bar area. To your left is the dining room. The kitchen is back behind that. In addition, we would have a dedicated sports viewing lounge, which is a new and unique element for this Edina location. We've also got, given this configuration, a little bit more booth seating throughout this location, both for an upscale feel as well as for families in particular adjacent to the gaming space. And then those three rooms along the back or the bottom left there are what we call our special event rooms that I was speaking to a moment ago about where you can make a reservation for a large or small-sized party. We like to offer on the interior what we call a cool and current environment. So if you've been to our Maple Grove location and you can see these pictures, we have sort of changed our finish-out package to be what we think is a little bit more upscale. And in the dining room in particular, we try to achieve a few things. We try to make sure that the dining room stays intimate, stays a little bit more quiet, a little less stimulation in that part of the space relative to the gaming and other spaces because we want people to be able to enjoy a full dining experience. The other thing that we try to incorporate into the dining room and to a few other places is that into the artwork that we put in, we want to localize it and make it special to the market. So if we get further into the design process, we'll go through a research phase where we start to pluck out specific images that we think highlight the community of Edina to make sure that we're resonating and reflecting what makes this market special and us a fit with you. The bar has two personalities. One side is oriented to the midway and amusement side, and we call that the game bar. The other side has a very dedicated sports orientation, and this leads directly into what we were talking about earlier, to our big-screen sports viewing area. These spaces are great for alumni groups, but they're also for more than sports. So it can be an Oscar night party or any sort of viewing party where you want to bring a group together and have a night out and enjoy big-screen TV watching. From here, I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Jill. She's gonna take you through a little bit more about our amusements and our day-to-day operating policies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jill Valkovic and I'm with Dave and Buster's. Our corporate address is twenty-four eighty-one Manana Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-zero. So taking you through the floor plan, we are in our game room, which of course, at Dave and Buster's is what sets us apart from casual dining and it's what makes us wow and great and fun. We are constantly updating our games and replacing our games to make sure that we keep our guests interested. We have two types of games. We have non-redemption games and redemption games. Our non-redemption games are games like driving games, air hockey, those types of games that maybe you can have at home on your Xbox or Playstation. Of course, it's got a little bit of element of fun and big and wow. Our redemption games are those games where you can redeem tickets. Those tickets spit out, you know, based on the skill of the player, so you can win. Our most recognizable game, for especially us old-school players, is Ski Ball. We have all kinds of games that you can play. You can play a giant Connect Four and win tickets. You can play a giant Connect Four and win tickets. At the end of the night, you can accumulate those tickets and go to our winner circle, which is the win right there that you see in the left-hand corner. We have a wide ranges of prizes, from candy to teddy bears to iPads. About eighty percent of the prizes that are in that store are generated towards your single visit, meaning, you know, to come into Dave and Buster's and play all night on a power card, you can come in and commemorate your evening. So our guests come in, they dine, they play games, and then they go to the winner circle and buy a prize. And to answer one of your questions about the ten dollars, when you play a game, you hit whatever the highest level, skill level, on that game. If you take that number of tickets as the highest level of that game and turn it into the winner circle, you can't win a prize more than ten dollars. And this is an ordinance that we operate under in many states, and it's nowhere near ten dollars. And so this is where we operate. That's why we suggested that language, because it's consistent with other places where we Sorry, all these gadgets is hard to mess with. Moving through the floor plan, we have private event space. This is actually our boardroom space, which is a smaller room. As you can see, there's a mural that will highlight the local cityscape in Adina. And this is for smaller parties, board meetings. The next slide is our private event space. That's the function room that's just off the game room. It can be transformed into three different spaces, and you can see those slides there. Those doors will pull partitions, and it can be three smaller spaces or one large space depending on the event. And again, that mural there would be imagery to highlight important to Adina. So as a community partner and an employer, for this location, we expect to hire between one hundred and forty to one hundred and sixty people. And those employment opportunities range from your typical casual dining folks to jobs that are unique to Dave and Buster's, such as a midway tech, folks that work on the games, our winner circle attendance. In our charitable giving, we partner nationally with Make-A-Wish, and Buster is our ambassador. That's actually Buster there in the picture, and it's been really fun to reunite with him. We partnered with them in 2012, and to date, we've contributed about 1.6 million dollars to them. In addition to that, we encourage each of our general managers to support local charities, and so that sort of takes on the general manager's personality and passions. How we operate, we generally are open from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM on the weekends during our peak nights, and 11:00 AM to midnight during the week. And those are really flexible based on the market, during holiday time, special events, sporting events. Our house policies are really important to us. IDs are checked upon entrance for all guests under the age of thirty. Any guest under the age of eighteen must be accompanied by a parent or guardian, at least twenty-five years old, and that ratio can be one guardian to six minors. And minors aren't allowed to roam free, so this is a little different than a lot of concepts like us. You can't have parents in the dining room and the kids in the midway running around. Generally, if we see this happening, our managers or captains will reunite the kids with their parents. In addition to this, we feel like we're second to none on alcohol service policies. We require every front-of-the-house employee to be serve-safe trained, which is a National Restaurant Association program that's nationally recognized. All of our servers must be serve-safe certified, so that just means they take the same, they take the same course but are certified, and all of our managers are serve-safe instructors. In addition to this, we implement the Barge program, which is a secret service, sorry, secret shopper program, where we have someone come in, order a drink, they're under twenty-five, and if the server doesn't card them, they're presented with a red card. If they do card them, they're presented with a green card. If any server gets more than two red cards in a two-year period, they're automatically terminated. Everyone that receives a green card gets to celebrate in the back. In addition to this, we have store security during peak hours. And, you know, later in the process, our world headquarters director of security will work with Simon on this specific location to work out whatever security is needed for this location to keep us safe and secure. From a store leadership level, our general managers average ten years, eight years, and this is actually really important to us, because Dave and Buster's is a different animal all to itself, and our general managers know us. They know our house policies, and they make sure that we're consistent.
I have a question.
Okay.
On the slide that's titled "How We Operate."
Yes.
The third bullet point, one drink maximum for each ID.
Right.
What does that mean?
I can't go up to the bar and say, "I need three Bud Lights for my friends," and the server doesn't see my three friends.
Oh, so in other words, they're not limited in the evening to one?
That's right.
But they can't go get three for their friends?
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Right. So that was the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for having us here. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. We've got some questions, I think. Member Rindell, you had a question about a couple of things?
In looking at the ordinance... In looking at the ordinance, I'm looking at enforceability of it and what we are requiring. Do we know that a person can't more than, win more than ten dollars worth of redemption in a single play? So you know that because the most they can win in a single game is ten dollars worth of tickets or less?
Less than ten dollars a ticket, less than ten dollars for that single play.
For that single play?
Right, but they can be accumulated over time.
Right, I understand. They can, they can get, they can end up with more than ten.
Correct.
But in a single play.
A single play.
All right. And, let's see. So the other two questions were just kind of permutations of that based on how somebody might interpret it. So I got my answer, so I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to bring the chief up here. I think a few of the council members have a question for you.
I have a question for the proponent, too.
All right. Members Bragg, why the chief's working as well here? Was there, I want to talk to Ms. Tucker or Ms. Warren?
Just to clarify for everyone, so you win tickets and then you cash those in for prizes? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Okay. And the floor plan, for some reason, I thought I felt like there are more booths adjacent to the gaming area, but it doesn't really matter because parents can't sit there and let their kids roam free anyway, correct? So they have to have a dining experience with the children and then go together as a unit into the gaming area, correct?
Correct. That's part of our house operating policy.
Okay. And in terms of your other stores, the booth, number of booths, this is a family community, how does that compare to your other build-outs?
This is more than. I can look at our prototypical layout and give you that count specifically, but because of this configuration, we've actually got more booth seating than a prototypical layout.
That's probably good for the market. Can I, okay. And then in terms of your compliance procedures, so you have a robust liquor program as well as a floor management program as well, correct? I mean, you have actually, you said they're called captains?
We do. We have captains.
What are they typically doing on the floor?
They're typically there during peak hours. There are in-house sort of eyes and ears to make sure that our house policies are maintained. So they make sure that there aren't children roaming around. They're making sure that there's no passing of drinks in the game room. There's no, they just make sure that all, there are eyes and ears. They don't really have any other function than to monitor our guests.
And what are the peak hours?
Friday at seven o'clock until Sunday in the afternoon.
But is it, is there a certain, it's earlier evening than one would think, as I recall?
Yeah, our peak hours are from five to nine.
From five to nine? So it's really centered around the dinner hour? So it's not, it's a eat and game experience? Most of the tickets would reflect an eat and gaming, not just coming into game?
Right, and I believe the memo which we circulated as a, to the council, the peak of the peak is Friday, seven to nine. But if you look at that weekend timeframe, five to nine is sort of the heaviest use.
And did you say you had a food-to-liquor ratio?
Yes, of the food and beverage split. Yes, it's seventy percent food, thirty percent beverage.
Seventy, thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's your national average? Thank you. Chief, please. I think a couple of council members have some questions for you. Hopefully, they have answers.
Thanks. This is kind of an unusual location inside of the mall, which means that people will be leaving when the mall is closed, and there are a lot of different ways to exit out of the mall. Do you have any concerns about safety when you leave and how that parking lot gets patrolled for people leaving that are coming out alone and things like that? Because there's so many different, well, there only be one door, the door below the escalator. It goes out both onto the, underneath the ramp in the second floor of the ramp.
Okay, I'm trying to picture that. I haven't really looked at the plans of this building.
Mr. Martin, why don't you come up and address that issue?
Councilmember Swenson. So our plan is to cordon off that portion of the mall, that wing of the mall, in a fashion similar to what we do at the AMC Theater on the other side of the mall. We would have stanchions there that would cordon off that section. If somehow somebody parked somewhere else in the center and needed help, we plan to have additional security on hand during those additional hours than we do currently in order to handle that type of thing.
Well, you could park diagonally opposite at three in the afternoon, do shopping, end up there, and then leave late after the mall is closed and end up on the opposite side of your car. That's not a mall you want to be walking around at eleven o'clock at night. Okay, so it's, the security is on you, not on the city of Adina?
The security within the mall would be on us, yes.
Okay. And Southdale Mall, we used to have a station there. We do not anymore, correct?
We do.
We still do? Down below? Okay. And is it manned or womaned or personed? What percentage of the time?
Not late night, no. It's more during the business hours.
Okay. So you haven't really looked at this plan? You haven't really looked at where it is in the mall, so probably you aren't my best go-to to say, "How do you feel about this?" Because they're advocating for kids to be able to play games, and I just am not particularly comfortable with safety.
Andrew Hill.
If I can. I think in some ways, I think you may be getting, the council may be getting ahead of yourself a little bit, because although everything they've told you about Dave and Buster's is important, and your questions are important for them, we're really here to talk about amending the ordinance itself. And without that ordinance amendment, they can't do their project there. And however, with the, if you amend the ordinance, a great deal of what we've looked at from them tonight is really beyond our regulatory power to control. The questions about security and exiting, the chief hasn't had a chance to review, because we don't have a plan to look at at this point. There are a great, there are some complexities about how this, how this particular site would be exited, for example, that are going to take some time to work through with the fire department, so.
You know, but when we're asked to look at an ordinance change like this for use, part of what you think about when you're looking at it is, this is the kind of setup I want anywhere in Adina, whether it's up in the mall or not. I find the mall actually to be one of the more difficult places to put this, as opposed to their freestanding pictures. And does it serve my residents? And what residents does it serve? Because the way it's set up and the way that they police it, they don't really want kids, young kids playing games, and I wouldn't want them because I couldn't see them. So I just, my questions maybe sound like they're directly related to this particular floor plan, but they have to be, because that's all I have to compare to is, does this work for me and my city? So that's, if you're hearing something, that's what you're hearing from me.
But we don't, just so you know, we don't have a set of plans or proposals.
No, well, I know once I pass this, then they have to work out with the fire department, but that'll be my last shot at it. So this is where I ask any weird question I can. So I get what you're saying, but you have to understand where I'm coming from.
Yep, I get it.
And I have some more public safety questions, including, so we do have a substation back because both, three of us were on council when that substation disappeared, or at least the mall's support of it. So the substation is back, but it operates, it's staffed what hours?
Basically, I mean, the substation has always been there for many years.
Okay.
They used to, Southdale used to be able to reimburse this money of roughly seventy-five, seventy-five thousand a year.
Seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars a year.
And that was to cover the cost of having an officer out there.
Yes.
So we would match that, the city of Adina would, or the police department would, and we would match body, and so we'd have two officers out there, one kind of reimbursed from Southdale, one at the expense of the police department, so we could have two officers.
So taxpayers paying for half of it?
Right.
The mall paying for half of it approximately?
Right. And then that contribution back to us, that seventy-five thousand a year back to us stopped...
Two thousand and eight?
Probably around there, somewhere's in that area. It's been a while.
Okay, and it has not returned?
That has not returned.
So now the substation is taxpayer-supported in full?
Right. We still have two officers, but we've seen as we are no longer obligated to have an officers out there, we will use them in different areas of the city. If a crime trend pops up somewhere else in another commercial district, we're not obligated to leave anyone. At Southdale, we'll take them out and put them somewhere else.
Okay, okay.
But the substation itself is maintained by Southdale, and so we have access to that, and we do have officers who work there on a regular basis. At this point in time right now, with our staffing levels low due to the retirements, we don't have it fully staffed.
Okay. What do we know about the public safety record of the Dave and Buster's in Maple Grove?
In doing a little bit of research to your email there, we called up, we got a number of calls for service, and last year, in 2013, there was roughly, I believe, forty calls for service. Two of them were medical-related, and thirty-eight of them were a variety of different types of calls. When I was looking through the list of calls, seemed like the majority of them were more parking lot-related, with either like property damage, accident, vehicle lockouts, unruly people in the parking lot, possibly a fight call. There's a couple of alcohol-related calls out there and disruptive people, but not a lot.
Okay. And, let's see. Another question that I had was, their business model has them open till 2:00 AM Thursday through Saturday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. Is there any other liquor-licensed establishment in this city that operates until those hours on those evenings?
They have Ruby Tuesdays in Rojo, the Mexican Grill, I believe.
So both also in the mall?
Mm-hmm, yeah. They're both in Southdale.
And then I have, I have, another question regarding the ordinance itself, but I'll wait until, I guess, when we were looking at this before, the staff report says, and I was on council, three of us again were, there was the question about distance from residential property, and I didn't note anything. I noted the type of business district, but I didn't notice, know anything in the proposed ordinance that refers to distance in feet from residential property. And given the mixed, given the designation of the area as mixed-use in the comprehensive plan, given what we are adding to the area in terms of housing, I don't know why it wouldn't be an issue going forward of a type similar to the issue that was raised previously, if we don't have some kind of distance from housing because of the lateness of the hour that it proposes to operate, et cetera. Any other, any other concerns? I know Member Swenson asked you this question. Anything that you would raise as an issue for the council to be noting in this ordinance?
Not at this time. I talked to a couple of sergeants up in Maple Grove and asked what their experience has been with Dave and Buster's, and it was, for the most part, very positive, and they haven't had really any problems with them at all.
Thank you. I actually did visit the Dave and Buster's in Maple Grove. My husband and I paid for dinner there. It's several years ago. We were there about nine o'clock on a Friday night to order, and then later. And what we noticed at that time, I don't know what the demographics are today, the families were leaving at about nine o'clock. There were chiefly groups of young men and groups of young women, not young men and women together, but more in groups by them, kind of by themselves. And that's, anyway, that was my sociological observation. Thanks.
Member Bragg.
Back to Southdale, how many calls do you get out there usually?
I actually pulled that information. For 2013, we had seven hundred and fourteen calls to Southdale.
Is it going up or down?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I would say it's probably about consistent. It's pretty much leveled off. We haven't seen any spikes out there.
Okay. And you saw their presentation on their house policies and their... And you saw their presentation on their house policies and their liquor compliance policies.
Mm-hmm.
How would you rate those in relation to other establishments? More restrictive, less restrictive, but average?
I like... I would say a little bit more restrictive. I like the red card, green card deal that gives people a reward for doing the right thing. And if you get two red cards and you're out, that's more than a lot of restaurants do here in Edina.
And do... I mean, they have floor captains as well. That's something that... Isn't that usually a manager or something that's running the floor versus a separate position?
That I'm not sure as far as what position is responsible for that in other restaurants.
So, you talked to your colleagues in Maple Grove?
Mm-hmm.
And they said that they've had a generally good experience. What about the partnership with the establishment? Did they mention anything about the collaboration, the communication being a certain level? Good?
Hmm. They said that their working relationship with them was good.
With the management?
And that they seemed to be very police-friendly and cooperative with law enforcement anytime they were called out there.
Okay.
So, and that they had passed all their alcohol compliance checks.
They had passed all over the years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I can also tell you on that relative to Maple Grove that both Manager Neil and I have had conversations with the city manager and the mayor up there, and they both consider Dave and Buster's to be a real good corporate citizen. So, we've been told from them, so... Roger, it looks like you had a hand in working on this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. I reviewed... Not the content so much as the putting in the form.
Did Mr. Noonendorf work on content or...
Yes.
Mr. Teague? Who worked on content?
I was primarily responsible. We initially got input from Dave and Buster's, and they went back and looked at what was discussed in 2006 and offered us a suggestion. Roger and I then reviewed that, added several more restrictions to make sure that it worked for the prospective tenant, but also worked for the city.
All right. So, Roger, with respect to page one, section two, I had forgotten about this proposed language, but I like it as a possibility that we've limited this type of operation involving amusement devices and the sale of alcohol to the PCD-3 district. And Director Teague, if I remember correctly, PCD-3 is... There aren't more than one or two of them. Southdale may be the only PCD-3 district.
That and the Galleria.
That and the Galleria. Okay. So, that small area of the Southdale District. And then, you've got further recommendations about the licensed premises being at least 30,000 square feet in gross floor area, which speaks to the space that's available up on what I'll call the third floor. And then, you've got some other components too. Limited to 40% of the gross floor area or no more than the 40% of the gross floor area for use of the operation of amusement devices. And then, they have to have at least 200 seats. What was the reasoning behind imposing those types of conditions, either Mr. Noonendorf or Mr. Teague? Director Teague?
Bill Noonendorf can respond to that. The thought there was that we primarily are looking for restaurant destinations, not just amusement parks, bowling centers, those types of areas, but we're really focusing on the restaurant options as a first priority, realizing that the gaming, the amusements, and the entertainment is vital to this business. We wanted to put a restriction on that that was workable for the prospective tenants, but also primarily that resulted in a destination restaurant. And as far as the 200-seat, I thought there was... We didn't think it was appropriate to have this type of use pop up in smaller tenant vacancies that pop up in other locations. For example, if there's a 5,000-square-foot vacancy somewhere else, we didn't want a full liquor license and an amusement center and food because that seems to be more of a bar, which is not what we're pursuing. So, those are two conditions that we felt met the city's objectives and would still allow a business model like Dave and Buster's.
Other questions for Mr. Noonendorf at this point in time?
No.
Ms. Warren and Ms... May you want to come back up, please? When you and I have chatted before, we talked about the 30-year history of Dave and Buster's. And over time, and I think Ms. Dacher too, over time, you've really developed this model that promotes the safety of all of your customers, I guess is one way to put it, that you've looked hard at this alcohol-gaming-related issue over the years and have developed this model now where you're 70% food, 30% liquor, and then you've got this real tight management system on the use of the liquor. So, you want to comment on that further? What you've learned over time about how to manage your operation?
Yes. I think that certainly when Dave and Buster started the concept, it really was bringing the joy of amusements with fine dining and that combination, and also allowing for space for special events. But managing all of that under one roof, while it is our signature, it's what makes us unique, it is complicated. And so, from there, from the get-go, having founders in place that were operators and owners, we started to build our house policies. And so, over the years, we've refined each one, whether it be sort of targeted at how to manage a large 200-party special event, whether it's how to manage a Friday night, whether it's alcohol policy, whether it is our captain's position, which is unique in our industry, the fact that, as Ms. Valkovich said, their main objective, they're not distracted by checking in and out employees or doing other tasks. They are the eyes and ears of the floor. And so, they are looking and watching. They're looking at the bar. They're looking at the front door. They're checking IDs. They are that extra layer that helps all of the managers that are specific to the kitchen, the bar, and our amusement techs sort of get through those busy Friday nights, large parties, or other special times in managing the large business. I think it does come through 30 years of practice. It comes through 70 successful locations. We've got a great track record, but the operations and how we manage our business, we feel, is what sets us apart from other concepts who have tried to do this and haven't been able to find that ability to manage at all.
All right. Thank you. Member Swenson?
Do you sell something called a tower of beer?
We have something, I think it's called a beer tube. It is a large... I don't know how many ounces it is, and I think Jill can speak to the specifics.
We generally serve, I think... I believe it's 50 ounces of beer, so it's... We can only serve it to three or more people, so you can't just come up to the bar and order a tower of beer, but it's kind of... It's an equivalent of a pitcher of beer.
And then, how does the ID check work for that?
Every person at the table would be ID'd.
And if you have four people at the table that are 21 and one person that is 20, what do you do?
That wouldn't happen because the 20-year-old would need to be with a guardian at least 25 years or older. So, you're not going to have a table of one minor and a couple of 22-year-olds. We don't allow for that.
Okay.
Yes, we do, actually. We do. I apologize. I'm not sure. I believe... I mean, I believe we check all the IDs. We wouldn't provide them a glass, and it would be just as if there was a child sitting there.
Okay.
Yes?
You've got Dave and Buster's in 12 of your locations. Over what period of time have you built this relationship?
I don't know if... Can you guys answer that question?
We opened our first mall location with Simon in 1996. It was in Bethesda, Maryland.
Since 1996?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And what's your experience been with them as a town?
It's been very positive. And as I said, I mean, we just opened our 12, then we're working on a couple more. We will continue to invest in the concept.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Member Swenson?
I did come up with another question. Do you have any rules that are different between your different Dave and Buster's that different cities and towns have asked you to bring in, and what would those be?
The biggest difference is in our minors policy. So, in some locations, we don't allow for anyone under the age of 21 and without a parent or guardian. So, in most of our locations, it's 18 and under, meaning that anyone that's 19 years old can come in without a parent or guardian. But in some locations, the 21 and up requirement is there, meaning that everyone under the age of 21 needs to be supervised, which is why I was confused on the question.
Okay. And how many locations do you think you have been asked to have that as the requirement?
I think that in... There's a couple of locations where we've decided to do that just in concern with the demographics around that area. It wasn't as family-friendly as Edina. It's more urban. For example, I believe our Times Square location is 21 and up. I believe there's five or six. I think only three or four are mandated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. All right. Thanks for the presentation. Thoughts on the ordinance from council members? Do you want to... Somebody want to move it and then we get a second and have a discussion, or do you want to have a discussion first?
I'll move it.
I'll move it. I'll second then.
All right. We got a motion and a second on a first reading basis regarding ordinance 2014-8 concerning on-sale liquor licenses with amusement devices in the PCD-3 zoning district. Either Member Brindel or Member Sprague wish to comment?
I am impressed and very pleased with the management of Southdale by Simon and trust that we're in good hands with the advice that we're getting. I think the record with... From what I believe to be true with the experience with Dave and Buster's in 12 other locations, I think there's a nice track record there. I don't think that you would steer us in a direction that I think we have a good enough relationship, that I believe that you would not steer us in a direction that we would not want to go. So, in that trust, I will support this.
Member Sprague?
I rely chiefly on their operating model and their compliance procedures, the floor procedures, because I think it is a little more robust than the average operator. And clearly, both the mall owner and the operator don't want quality-of-life issues to spill onto their campus. It's not good for business. It's not good for the community. So, they have the same interests there. And I know that they are located in some upscale mall communities, having discussed that. And so, I feel like Edina can handle this, and it'll be a different experience, a welcome experience, I think, for a lot of people, just for something a little different. And I also like the other... The convention and the larger parties. I think that's something that we need more of in Edina as well. And I'm not concerned about the public safety issues, given the fact that the operating model they have in place seems to address this in a robust fashion. So, that's why I would support it.
Thank you. Member Swenson and then Member Bennett.
I wasn't supportive about this the first time around. I'm still not going to vote for it this time around. I'm not really comfortable with the model. And so, while I want something on the third floor that's successful at Southdale, and I would like to be helpful in getting that for you, it just doesn't work for me. It really doesn't work for me because this is the front page of your menu. And all it looks like to me is it's not eat, drink, and be happy. It's drink and be happy. We've been really slow in our liquor laws in Edina for a reason, and I guess I still hold to that. So, it doesn't work for me.
Member Bennett?
I have some concerns about the balance between private profit and public expense. And the public safety model here is, I understand from Member Brindel, that the crime fund actually provides about half of the service there. But it's a public... Publicly funded police protection, and at 2:00 in the morning, you're not having families come out to play. You're having a different... It is different. I agree with Member Sprague. And so, I appreciate the presentation. I think it's been very detailed. I appreciate the chance to visit the facility, but I don't think it's a good match for the community either.
Thank you. When we looked at this before, I didn't favor it either. I didn't like the location. I thought if there was a good location for this kind of a concept, it would be at the Southdale Mall. And I wasn't sure what I thought about Dave and Buster's when I went up to Maple Grove for that experience. Since then, I've had several conversations with folks up in Maple Grove that are involved in local government. As I mentioned earlier, they view Dave and Buster's as being a good corporate citizen up there. They're pleased that they're there. They think it's a great place for families to come and enjoy all of the activities that take place. I think this 30-year history of improving the model and the relationship with Southdale or with Simon development over time is a pretty important one to give consideration to. I do think it's a good location for something like this in that space, but that's not the reason I would support it, and I do intend to support it because I think it will be beneficial to many of the people in our community, in large part, families who are really going to enjoy themselves over there, just like we see people enjoying themselves over at Pin Stripes, which was the other location that you first sought out as a spot for Dave and Buster's. So, that proximity to residential properties over there across the lake would never work. But here, in the middle of the mall location, a great distance from any single-family homes, I think it'll work really well, and so, I'm going to vote in favor of it as well and take it to a second reading.
I have a question for you. You know, when we met with our health committee before the meeting tonight, we talked about the alcohol issues and early drinking in our community. Is there any consideration for the three of you that support this change to adding that, that you have to be 21 after a certain time to be in there?
Potentially. For me, it would be a potential issue.
Because, you know, we haven't... We didn't really ask them tonight when we were working with them, but we did talk about how things we do as a city does affect that.
That's a possibility.
I mean, you're going to have first reading tonight because you can't get four... You don't have four votes. So, I think at least I would encourage you, since I'm not supporting it, but I would encourage you to think about that.
I like the ratio that they have. I think it'll be at least as strong as the national model here in Edina with 70 food, 30 liquor. Our ordinance requires at least a 60-40 split, so that's very positive. But on second reading, if we wanted to look at that issue of age after a certain hour, I'd be willing to look at that.
Could I request it? Will we at least be prepared with that discussion?
We just talked to... I just talked to the city attorney very briefly. We can take a look at that and see how it fits in our liquor ordinance and how it fits with what we're doing here and bring some more information back to you before you do your second reading.
Member Bennett?
I have another question about the wording of the ordinance, and that is, I know the contemplation is that this is going to occupy the partial third floor of the mall, but by the wording of the ordinance, if you've met the square footage requirement minimum on the site... on the site, and it's the right zoning, and the premises are at least of a certain size, is it not possible that at some point, this could be built adjacent to the apartments that are going to be in the southwest or southeast corner, yeah, southeast corner of the mall?
The only outlet that they have that they can build on is where the...
South of the water tower?
Deli, no, north, that's big enough, is where the deli and the car services. That's the last outlet you've got out there, isn't it?
Fires.
Right. So, unless you were going to allow them to split something else off, that is the only spot that they can build it in right now.
So, what would stop it would be, what would be able to stop it would be the fact that they would have to have another kind of land division in order to accomplish it.
They don't need a land division. It's a separate lot.
Well, I was saying that, though, for another site. You're saying that...
Right. Yes. Yes. You're right.
You might think about that issue as well, Roger, for a second reading, if there's some further limitation in PCD III that would require that it be in an existing structure?
Because if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, part of the, part of the focus is, in fact, this location, finding a suitable tenant for the location, a suitable location for the tenant. And the fact that it could be in another location, I think that wording might want to be known.
Anyone meets the criteria, which is fairly substantial, licensed premises 30,000 square feet, the building 250,000 square feet, and so on. Those are, anyone who meets that criteria would meet the criteria and they could proceed.
Yeah. I think that's your point.
Right.
It isn't, it is not, the ordinance is not, doesn't say only this location in Southdale.
No way I understand.
And how, and how, okay, just two other questions, two follow-up questions then. How large is Galleria? How many, how many square feet? And how many square feet is at the Container Store, the district at Centennial Lakes?
That's not PCD III though, is it?
I don't know the exact numbers, but Galleria is, under this wording that's proposed, Galleria would be an eligible site. The location where Pin stripes is, I don't think would be. That's significantly smaller.
That's not PCD III.
Yeah, for another reason. It's not PCD III.
Okay. And I happen to know that's also 85,000 square feet.
It is PCD III.
Oh, it is?
It is.
But it's 85,000 square feet in, in area, well, in buildings, in existing buildings.
That's all?
Yeah. Because it would be, it was the same, maybe like 82.
So, besides Galleria and Southdale, and now we've added in, what is the pin stripes area called? Thank you. What other, what other have we not covered that's PCD III?
The Target Site would be another large, they don't have 250,000 square feet there, but that is on PCD III.
And Yorktown?
Yorktown is PCD III as well.
And where Starbucks and Old Navy just went in and Whole Foods.
That's in the MDD VI district.
Yeah, it's MDD.
So, that's kind of where we end. Okay.
Could you require that, this is for Roger, could you require that the licensed premises be at least 30,000 square feet in gross floor area, and that it be located in a building that it only could be described by Southdale? Or is that spot zoning?
Mayor, I hear what you're saying. Let's try to work on that. All right.
Thank you. All right. We've had some discussion. Any other further comment by council members? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post say nay?
Nay.
Carried. We'll see you all for a second reading, or at least some of you. All right. We are on to the consideration of a request that we potentially demonstrate our willingness.
This is, this gets into the world of extraordinary possibilities.
Yes, there are a lot of caveats. The trick here for this issue, of course, is that, is that the Beacon folks have a deadline to apply for livable community funding. We have not taken all the regulatory steps we need to take to approve their project, yet they have this deadline. So, that's why the language is as squishy as it sounds, speculative. It's very, that's a much better word. Thank you. Councilmember Bennett, the language of this is written in a speculative fashion because we have not granted the project all of the necessary, we haven't given it, you haven't given it your full consideration. It doesn't have any of the regulatory approvals it needs, and yet there's a deadline to get in line for funding at the Metropolitan Council.
Yeah. So, I mean, the point is that what we could potentially pass tonight in no way minds the city to approve.
It does not.
A request from a regulatory or legislative standpoint.
That's right.
For sure.
Or to accommodate that kind of housing.
Right.
So, all right. We got a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to acknowledge the receptivity. Wow, this is couched in vagueness. Acknowledge receptivity of the Metropolitan Council Livable Community Account, LCA funding to assist the potential development of affordable housing potentially located at 3330 West 66th Street. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And now, we are on to 50th and France Special Assessment Policy. Mr. Newendorf?
Yes, Goodie, thank you. This item clarifies a policy that we've discussed for the last several months. It's in regards to the method that staff uses to distribute the costs of special assessments at the 50th and France commercial area. When the feasibility report was first accepted back in February, we knew that we'd have to make some amendments to bring our method up to date. Our current method was established back in 1974. It worked fine for several generations, but over the last 40 years, there's been a lot of changes. And it's appropriate that that policy be brought up to date and be memorialized in writing. So, the proposed policy has been vetted through the council at work session. Also, I've conducted two meetings with the owner group, where I've invited each of the owners to weigh in on different ways to massage or modify that assessment policy. And they are, those that have been responsive have been supportive of it as well. So, what you see here reflects the last council work session, and I'd recommend your approval.
Questions for Mr. Newendorf?
No, I will move item 8E.
All right. Yeah. Incidentally, you did perfect work here. It was not easy coming up with this modernized assessment policy. So, we really appreciate it.
Well, and you gave us a very long presentation on it a few weeks ago that really was great. So, thank you for doing that ahead of time. Otherwise, at this time of night, we might have all been yawning a little. But it was, that was very helpful.
Very helpful. All right. We got a motion and a second on the proposed special assessment policy for the, for the property owners of 50th and France regarding the proposed improvements that are going to take place on there. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. All right. And we've got a resolution 2014-62, accepting various grants and donations.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And we've got some donations this period to the Edina Art Center. Pin stripes, generous gift, $2,500. Couple of other folks as well. Edina Communications and Technology Services, a grant from the Edina Community Foundation. And then the Edina Public Works Department got a nice little, I guess you could call it gift from the Browndale Park Association. So, two trees. That's right. I think I know whose yard they came from, but I'm not sure. I think it came from the Christians and House. Not positive. Anyway, and then we've got a citywide marked crosswalk standard, and Mr. Nolan has this matter. This was, I thought, interesting.
Thank you once again, Mayor. Members of council, I am here tonight to discuss with you the staff's recommendations for citywide marked crosswalk standards. As you may recall, at your February 3rd council meeting, during the review of the draft Act of Routes to School Plan, one of those recommendations, in addition to the ordinance discussion we had earlier, was to standardize our marked crosswalk patterns in the city. And at that time, council had asked staff to take a look at that. So, since that time, staff has met, we put a team together, public works and engineering staff, and met several times since then to look at this. And what I'm going to present to you tonight are the recommended crosswalk patterns, the types of marking materials that were considered and then recommended, and then briefly the proposed funding that we would use for our recommendations. This slide is basically a summary of the recommended crosswalk patterns. Excuse me. The citywide standard being the Continental Crosswalk, and we'll talk about these in a little bit more detail. The school zone standard, which would be similar, would be a ladder crosswalk. And then recognizing also that Edina, we do have specialty crosswalks, such as Brick Inlay in the Country Club Neighborhood, Concrete at 50th and France, existing Duratherm crosswalks, which we'll also talk about in a minute. So, staff is recommending for the citywide crosswalk standard, what's called the Continental Crosswalk. And this crosswalk, at least the way it's been used in the city, and we're recommending it's continued to be used, is a three-foot by six-foot block, a series of blocks spaced three feet apart. And the, what's interesting about this is that the Federal Highway Administration research indicates that these types of crosswalks are the most visible to motorists, and according to the FHWA. And of course, these are the types of crosswalks that city staff is currently using. So, that process is in place. It's also being used by Hannibal County, Mendot, and other nearby metro cities. And what this also does is that three-foot gap allows the variation of that distance for the wheel lanes to be in between the blocks, which just increases the durability and length, lifetime of those, of those markings. The school zone standard crosswalk, staff had decided, in order to potentially enhance the crosswalk, would be to take the standard I had just discussed and add an eight-inch line, lateral line, both in the front and back, to create what's called a ladder crosswalk, which has the same benefits in terms of visibility as the Continental Crosswalk, but maybe even indicating a higher level crossing at those locations near schools. We considered four types of marking material. Staff thought this is a good time to take a look at material recommendations as well, and not just marking patterns. We talked about latex, epoxy, thermoplastic, and duratherm. There are some pros and cons to each of these, and I've listed them here, and they're in the report. But we could talk about those as we get into the recommendations. So, staff's recommended crosswalk marking material is to continue the use of latex paint for typical crossings. Now, the costs involved with latex paint, certainly in terms of materials, are considerably less. Yes, staff does have to re-mark these generally on a yearly basis. But when you compare latex paint to epoxy, the materials costs for epoxy are considerable. They do have a little bit longer lifespan. But you have to purchase the equipment, and the processes and costs involved with hazardous materials is quite considerable as well. Thermoplastic pavement markings at higher traffic locations, we are, staff is recommending the, beginning to use thermoplastic markings at these traffic locations that have high concentrations of pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic and turning movements. An example of a location that staff continues to use is 50th and Halifax, which those blocks were just marked recently. However, they do have to be replaced two or three times a year because of the traffic in that location. And to present a graph here in a little bit that talks about the costs involved with thermoplastic markings. And the third bullet here is, we are recommending to discontinue the use of the duratherm pavement markings. They are, they're very colorful. You can get unique patterns out of this process, but they are very expensive to install and to replace. When the time comes to replace them, they have to be milled completely out with asphalt put back in, and then the duratherm markings, using heat placed back in there again. So, that's using the use of contractors or purchasing expensive equipment. And staff feels that there, the little to no visibility benefits for these crosswalks in terms of, certainly as, as it gets darker out, there are some that feel, and the, trying to find studies, but because the technology is relatively new, they're not really out there. But this is an opinion that staff had, in addition to looking at those cost considerations, to discontinue the use of those duratherm pavement markings, that we would keep the ones that are in place for their useful life. So, this graph represents the cumulative costs associated with both latex blue and thermoplastic pavement markings in orange. And what this is showing is that replacing the latex pavement markings every year does increase the labor costs while duratherm, excuse me, thermoplastic pavement markings can be replaced every, it's five to eight years. We use seven years for the study. And what that does is basically after about four years, the cumulative labor costs for installing thermoplastic is actually less than that for latex. And as you look in the long term, getting to 15, 20 years, those values start to be the same. And there's a considerable savings for those crosswalks where thermoplastic is placed in terms of labor costs. So, that, staff feels that that's time the public work staff could be spent doing something else. And also, for safety considerations, it's less time at those busier intersections that public work staff spent exposed to traffic. Briefly, funding, the recommended latex markings, again, it's what Public Works is doing right now. So, that will be covered under their existing processes and budget. The thermoplastic pavement markings, the staff, both public works and engineering staff, thought that the PACS fund, pedestrian cycle safety funds could be used to purchase the initial equipment and material cost for those, those thermoplastic markings. And the equipment cost is about $18,000 for the heaters, and then the additional grinders and blade sets that are needed for that. So, at that point, then, public work staff could install that moving forward, using their own budgets for maintenance and materials costs in the future years.
Member Bennett?
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, is it possible that with the higher volume streets on which you contemplate using thermoplastic pavement markings, that it might make sense to use state aid, municipal state aid funding for those rather than PACS funds, given the need for PACS funds?
I know Director Milner has something to say about that.
We would, Councilmember Bennett, we would use those on our state aid projects. We could use the maintenance fund from our MSA state. But most of the talk we're, we're looking at now is like 50th and Halifax. It's not state aid. That's a higher volume local road that we would typically do this. And as we do our state aid reconstructions, we would definitely use our new standard if this gets approved.
And I'm just eager to see that PACS fund stretch as far as it can.
Other questions for Mr. Nolan? Members Sprague?
So, the duraplast that are currently out there, I see the ones right over here are wearing out already. Do you know when those were installed?
2004, when City Hall was built.
The ones out there were...
Right by City Hall?
I have shaking heads over here. They put in City Hall, and then they put in the...
They seem newer than that.
Okay. Well, they're, they're wearing out. That's a pretty high-volume road. I gotta say, I do, I think, I like the decorative element myself. I know that that has nothing to do with utility, but, and they seem visible to me, too, because of the crosshatch. So, I see that as two benefits. I understand, though, we have to outsource to do them. We'd rather do this thing in-house. When, when you get to the school crossings, those were really elaborate. And you're saying that those are less visible than this ladder? Because when I look at the ones that are out there, they look very visible.
Yeah, but to redo them, you have to re-grind off the pavement of the street.
I'm, I'm just asking about visibility.
My opinion, a green pavement marking is less visible than a white pavement marking. So, you have green interspersed in there.
But it's all the design, it's all the, the design I'm talking about.
Yep. But it is inlay lower. You get grit and sand in there. So...
We're back to maintenance and cost. I hear what you're saying.
Well, in two issues, there's initial visibility, and there's long-term visibility. And one of the things, this is a great report, thank you. And one of the things... And one of the things, this is a great report, thank you, and one of the things I noticed about it, or that caught my eye, is the decline or the falloff in visibility, which is, as a pedestrian or motorist around the city, what I'm noticing, 44th Street, you can barely see anymore. They were visible at the beginning, but they're not anymore.
And then, could we use these for bike markings, this machinery, to do bike?
We did discuss this, we, yes, we could do that, depending on the size of the markings and the, because I believe that the heater, we're looking at?
That's what you did over with that green lane, isn't that thermoplastic?
That's thermoplastic as well, yeah.
Okay, that seems really reflective, is there a reflective element to the?
There's glass beads in there, and that'd be similar to what's in this thermoplastic, the white with glass beads.
Okay, good. Because paint, white paint, crosswalk, it seems very lowbrow, and I like the idea of getting more visibility with the material itself. Same with the bike markings, I know, and we know how quickly the paint rubs off, I mean, it's like immediately, especially in some of those high-volume areas. So it's good to hear that we can cross utilize this, because I think it'll make a huge difference with the bike markings as well.
Public Works have brought up that exact point, that to try to utilize this on the bike markings, because they get less vehicle traffic, so they should last longer than seven years, put one in, and hopefully they last longer, and they have to do it less than they do now with the latex paint.
That being said?
On a yearly basis, so.
I can't say I won't feel a little nostalgic to see the little brick pattern go away, but...
Okay, so I'll move this issue.
Member Brind, okay, we've got a motion in a second, member Brindle?
I haven't asked my questions yet.
Okay, well, this is a good time.
Okay, so looking at the cost graph, the way I look at this is material cost, and the material cost continues to get higher and higher. And so I'm looking at a way to lower the material cost. Now, what you mentioned is something that I actually didn't really, I didn't go there with the comparison of staff cost and the ability to see that your staff at year 20 costs more with latex application than it does with the thermoplastic. Help me understand the logic, because you have equipment that you need to buy for thermoplastic, and I understand it lasts longer, but latex is cheap, and you're out there painting latex every year anyway, with left-turn lanes, right-turn lanes, other lane markers. Why thermoplastic, why not do it all in latex?
Staff's feeling is that, and this graph is, it might be a little bit misleading, this takes an example of a crosswalk at, I believe it's 76th and York, and comparing latex to thermoplastic over a 20-year span. What we're looking at doing is replacing some of those higher-traffic areas with thermoplastic, so it's not a citywide replacement of one versus the other. And really, for us, it was looking at those long-term costs. I'm a planner, after all, I have to look way out there. And those long-term costs start to equal out, and we felt that this benefits to staff could potentially outweigh the materials' costs over time.
Councilmember Brindle, Public Works is at the limit of what they can stripe in a year currently. So if we keep adding pedestrian and cycle safety facilities, you know, we always add more across, they're gonna, the level of service is gonna go down on those facilities. They're not gonna be able to restripe them yearly, they don't have the staff currently in-house to do that. So that was another consideration, that this will allow them to be able to keep up with all the markings and pay.
So you've got, you can have something that's striped that'll last five years?
Five to eight years.
Five to eight. All right, I have no problem with the design. All right, then, I'm fine with that. I just was looking at pure dollars and cents, so, but I appreciate your explanation, thank you.
Welcome. We have a motion on this matter?
I'll move it.
We've already moved it.
Second to the?
We've got a motion and a second, that's right, thank you. We hadn't had a chance to have member Brindle ask her questions yet, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Carrie, thank you very much. We're down to correspondence and petitions, I think it's member Brindle, after we get, any other correspondence or petitions other than what was on the dais, I guess I should say first of all? No, well, hold on, we're gonna do aviation update here, we, member Bennett may have something there.
Well, we have two advisory communications, are we going to discuss those at all, or take them under advisement, or if they are advisory communications, so what is our handling on those?
We just inquire as to whether there are any additional pieces of correspondence or petitions other than what we had in our packet or was on the dais, and there's nothing. So we can go right to the aviation noise update.
I have a question for manager Neil, and then member Swenson and I did a joint presentation at a Neighborhood Association-sponsored forum, and we are going to briefly walk through that. Manager Neil, you and I talked about some kind of process to identify where in the community RMTs, those are remote monitoring towers, could be located under a decision by, recommendation by the Noise Oversight Committee. There will be three temporary RMTs located for a period of two weeks, north of 494, south of 394, west of Zerkes, and east of 169. It works out to one in St. Louis Park and two in Edina.
Right. We've had some, and we have had some input, the mayor and I have had some input from Representative Earhart, who is interested in at least attending some kind of open house event. We haven't put final touches on what that might be, but there is some interest, I think, in gathering some, probably suggestions, I would call them, from residents to see if there are some ideas about where this could be placed in the community. In my interaction with the MAC staff, they've indicated to take a look at where we are getting the most complaints driven in the community, and try to locate them there. They have not prescribed yet where they're gonna be, but they do want to, they do want to have a chance to respond if we have suggested locations.
They have a more complete record of complaints than we do, because we've been, in fact, directing people to, if they have concerns, to express those concerns, so if they can help us out with that, that would be useful. Yeah, you and I, and then I separately with Representative Earhart, did discuss perhaps a virtual town hall with boards, maps, city maps in the lobby of City Hall, possibly at Southdale Library, Grandview Library, and allowing people to use stick pins or some other method of marking where they think would be a good place to place a tower, and then also note cards. Okay, so, and then finally, Representative Earhart was very concerned about capturing input from the community before people dispersed on summer vacation, and I know we're coming up on that rapidly.
Thank you.
I have a comment on that. So in terms of the noise monitoring stations, as I recall the flight patterns, there are thicker tracks and frequencies over certain areas, like if you look on the south side of Cornelia, the bands of overflights are thicker than the other areas. So I understand doing it on a complaint basis, but wouldn't you also want to put it where the volume is as well?
Yeah, I think that the tough part for the council will come, that complaint data doesn't neatly line up with where the most traffic volume is occurring.
And the volume itself can change from week to week, the reporting on the monthly operations reports, which we'll look at just an example of in a minute.
We took a tour and got in the tower, which was really kinda cool, of the airport last week, and what you learned is that they set up the arrivals and departures for the day, and then it's really difficult to change it, and the only time they ever change it now is if they've got a really big change in the wind, or storm, or some weather-related major issue to make them change, because they literally have to kind of shut down arrivals and departures for a period of time till they can get the switch going, because they set up a pattern, and then they stay with that pattern all day long. So if the wind for the two weeks that we're monitoring happens to say the same weird way, and we're going over a path that's been really heavy a few weeks earlier, it may not be that time that it's heavy. But we can't really control that, and, you know, they set it up based on the wind, we learned a lot about incoming and outgoing. It was, and so you realize just how little control they really have over where they put the planes off on.
Don't they have the long-term volume on the charts, though? I mean, there's some, gonna be some aberrations, but you'll establish a long-term pattern of heavier?
Well, that's, again, we'll see a slide on that in just a minute, but also from an overall efficiency perspective, they prefer to use what they call a north-flow operation, because there are only two of the four runways at the airport that are parallel to each other. This is unlike other airports in the country, and those are 30 left, 30 right, going in a north-flow operation, 12 left, 12 right, in a south-flow operation. And what, again, for the greatest efficiency, they operate departures off of 30 left and 30 right, and they operate arrivals coming in from the south on 30 left, 30 right, and then also on 17, or, yeah, 17, and that maximizes their usage. So if we could?
If we will, we're working on it.
Yeah, and then member Swenson opened the presentation, the presentation started with introductions, Hope Melton is current chair of the Steering Committee, and then there was a presentation by Sarah Thompson from MSP Fair Skies. She largely focused on RNAV and the changes that it will produce. Our presentation was on what the city is doing, what's in our work plan, I'm gonna turn to member Swenson on that, and then also what objective information we have about current conditions.
We tried to be really clear about what our timing was, about when we learned about it, and what we had done sequentially since then. So we were, you know, I gave a quick overview of the city, then, this is the slideshow that member Bennett then gave.
With the great assistance of Chris Ocker and the Planning Department, this is the presentation that we put together. These are the city's, this is from the city's work plan, the council agreed on this over a year ago, and we do want people to know that since this hit our radar screen in November 2012, it is being, there's strong commitment at all levels of the city to address this. We go to the next slide, and the purpose is, this is probably the best slide I have to show those runway locations, and you can see the parallel 30 left, 30 right, 17, 35 is roughly north-south, 422 is the airport, the runway that leads off to the northeast, and member Swenson and I learned on our tour that that is going to be employed for a single flight a day to Japan. It is the longest runway at the airport, but it is very, very rarely used. Then we go to the next slide, and this is what we were referring to, or what member Sprague was referring to in terms of the representation of density. This is just for one week, April 1st through 8, 2014, it shows arrivals on the left and departures on the right, and the density is represented by color gradient. This is a new development in noise reporting in the past year, and it's much more helpful to show the trending than what was available previously. And to member Sprague's point again, you can see the very thick lines over on the, or mass over on the right slide showing departures. It's about mid-range in terms of represented density, and you can see that yellow and orange coming in arrival patterns, and also closer to the airport, and again, that use of 1735, or 174 arrivals in that north-flow pattern. Moving to the next slide, this represents percentage of runway use. At the last NOK meeting, the one on May 8th, there was actually a runway use report that was part of the agenda. You can see on the left that arrivals in the north flow of, what is it, about 43% of them are on 30 left and 30 right. Going to the next slide, departures, 56% on 30 left and 30 right. So what we said in the presentation is that the Noise Oversight Committee and the MAC do use a lot of data, and what this data, what this objective information shows us is that it's not just perception among residents at all. There is data to support this perception that there is heavy use, that there does appear to be concentration, and that it does head off to the northwest, first over Richfield and southwest Minneapolis, and then over Edina. These maps are from the Star Tribune, and show on the right the dispersal that member Swenson and I learned when we attended a noise meeting in Seattle last fall, is actually random. It's, and we also had that confirmed at the airport, the planes, they're supposedly on the same heading, but when you're operating by voice communication, there's a dispersal that just occurs. The pattern that's depicted on the left is what would happen with RNAV, which is, some people refer to it as GPS, but I have, I would say, it's not just GPS telling you where to go, it's GPS actually driving your car. Then we go back to the towers, and the reason that we go back to the towers is because another new form of reporting has been added, and that shows the day-night noise levels measured per RMT, and this is featured now every month. I'd like people to take particular note of the locations of Towers 1, which is closest to Edina, 2, at the Rose Garden, 3, 5, 27, and 7. And 1, 3, and 5 are important. We were, we learned, I think it was in March, that there, the towers are supposedly not located in a way that keeps measuring the same flight pattern, but with 1, 3, and 5, I think we see a depiction of something that does in fact measure something coming off 30 left. Then going to the next slide, these are values per RMT from greatest to least. Tower number 1 is 13th, tower number 7, and also in that top 13, tower number 2 in that top 13, tower number 3, also higher, and just 27 is under 8. So there is, again, this objective measurement of noise of the flights that are going off to the northwest. Also, back, if we could, back to that slide for just one, the RMT slide, if we could. One of the things that we covered at that Neighborhood Association meeting is that all of the cities on this map are represented on the NOK. There are RMTs, as you can see, in every one of them except St. Louis Park, Edina, and then Sunfish Lake, and that's part of why we made the request that we did. Only four RMTs west of 35W, and with the other objective information we have, we think it's really important to get some noise data. We did request permanent RMTs, temporary, temporary RMTs is what we were able to get at this time, but it is a situation that we will continue to work with and monitor. And finally, going to the end, we have contact information, again, available for our MAC Commissioner, Lisa Palin, and then the last slide is contact information available. We also discussed the fact that this is really, the influence on airport operations and aviation operations is really at three levels, or chiefly the federal level with the FAA, and what is being done with the skies. An aviation bill will be, the work on it will begin this year, it will be, has to be completed by next year, so we are encouraging people to contact their congress, congressional representation, senators as well, and then also the state level, there is legislation that can be enacted, and finally, at the local level, where we are doing what we can, but there are these two other levels that control, particularly the federal. Councilmember John Quincy from Minneapolis, they spoke as well, he confirmed a lot of the information that we've been speaking about, and also, one of my big takeaways from what he discussed is that you can negotiate, you can legislate, and you can litigate. And he said the most successful, the easiest, is the negotiation, and he encouraged all parties in the room to continue looking at that. Commissioner Palin spoke as well, answered some questions, there was an energetic question and answer period, and member Swenson, anything I left out?
No, no, it's a good meeting.
And thanks to the Concord Neighborhood Association, and especially to Connie Carino for all the work she did organizing it. Oh, and Senator Franzen spoke as well, and also Representative Earhart, and they confirmed again this levels of authority, and the hope that things will be done on a federal level.
Well, thank you to both of you for participating in that meeting. It was important that you were there. I know, member Swenson, it's your neighborhood, but, member Bennett, it was good to have you there as well, with your active work on this issue of, hopefully, noise reduction, and not just noise monitoring, we'll see what happens over time here. All right, member Brindle? Member Brindle.
Sir.
Council comments?
Council comment.
All right. I do, I do have a few. There's a lot going on. Mr. Lorenz made a comment earlier about parking and the lack of parking at, lack of sufficient parking at Fiftieth and France, and I will pass that message on to Commuter Services, which is an organization that works with businesses along the 494 area, but, but the, Edina is one of the, is a member of that organization. So I can certainly suggest that they talk to Fiftieth and France, which I believe they are in conversation, but to stress the importance of carpooling and other, other methods for, for people, particularly people who work in the Fiftieth and France area. So I will pass that message along. Speaking of Fiftieth and France, the art fair is coming up this weekend, June six, seven, and eight. And Friday and Saturday, the hours are from ten to seven. Sunday, hours are ten to six. And it's, it's a good time had by all. So I expect you'll be cutting a ribbon that morning, or whatever you do as mayor.
Teddy Bear Band is there, are they?
Oh.
They were last year.
Be there somewhere, I'm sure. So the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, once again, will be manning the West Information booth, so we'll be over there. That's at the entrance to the U.S. Bank parking lot along Fiftieth Street, and we will once again have the very popular Edina Police Pedal Car. And it's a free drawing. Just put your, put your name in the fishbowl, and we pull out a name on Sunday. So we've given away like four of these, and, and they're really, really fun. Act on Alzheimer's is a, it's a core team focused on Edina that is, that is just getting underway. We had an exploratory meeting about a week ago, and the kickoff is June 12th, next Tuesday, in the afternoon at The Waters. I think it's like two o'clock at The Waters Senior Living. But, but the purpose for this core team is to really prepare our community to understand and support families who are dealing with Alzheimer's, a member of their family. We are fortunate to have on the core team a gentleman who actually has an early diagnosis of Alzheimer's, and so he's helping us to understand that as we get to know him. So it's, it's a very good group that represents a variety of segments of our community, business, city, churches, chamber, school, you name it. People are on there representing that segment of the community. So we meet, the, the board itself, the core team itself, meets on the second Tuesday of every month. All right. Road salt. I saw an email go by about lawns and road salt, and I haven't actually gotten any comments from, from anybody to help them with their lawns. Everybody's kinda doing it on their own. But it, it leads me to make the comment that I would like Public Works to take a look at how much salt they put down, because we live on a hill, hill up, and then the hill goes down, and there's always excess salt on the road, which I know is a watershed issue, and it's, it's a lawn issue. So if it's possible to not put, put so much salt down, that would be nice. Storm drains, there are some storm drains in the Indian Hills area that are clogged with leaves and sticks. When you walk by, I mean, there's no, you really don't even know there's a drain there. So with all the rains this last weekend, I would imagine that, that the water just kinda piled up and slowly dissipated rather than running freely as it should. So for residents, if you see a storm drain near you that's clogged, please get a shovel or a rake or something out there. But, but I don't know, Chad, do you know if Public Works makes rounds around the city to look at drains?
Well, they've been very busy this last weekend, but if a resident has a drain that's plugged, they can go to the website and just report a problem.
Oh, okay.
And be taken care of. They don't wanna do it themselves.
But, but your advice is good. I mean, a lot of, a lot of times you can, you can handle that very quickly.
Take care of it yourself.
Yeah. It's very helpful.
All right. We had a couple instances in our pack at this time of words that are not in general use in our language. So I commented on it and thought I would just sort of apologize to the public and say that, that we'll try and use more standard-use words rather than receptivity and micturates.
Micturates I had to look up.
Well, yes. I sort of deduced what it meant, but, yes.
Well, yes, but I verified that it really meant that, 'cause I didn't believe it was really a word.
I didn't either. But anyway, I realized that the origin of, of those terms did not come from city staff. It came from other places, but still, I think that, that we can use words that make more sense. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Member Swenson.
Yeah, normally I'm quiet. I had a couple things. I did go a couple weeks ago with Member Sprague to the Water Seminar for Engineering. I'm gonna hand off my info over here, but I do know there's something that I won't be able to attend, and it's the second in these NEMA workshops, and this one's on Lake Minnetonka, July 23rd. So you guys may get an email about that. It was interesting, we saw our aquifer and how it's dropping. It's not as bad as the aquifer west of Saint Cloud. I think I'm happy I'm in the, what are we, the Mount Simeon Aquifer right now? And the takeaways were the biggest groundwater issue, nitrates. But it was a great seminar. The ECC bushes need trimming. We put up really great little signs on how to bike, but on Wooddale, as you go by Edina Country Club, you can't really see the signs, nor can you bike in the bike lane right now, because the bushes are way out in the street. So I don't know who's in charge of calling ECC, but they need to trim their bushes now, because it's really impacting our bike lane, and this is important. Thursday, I have a all-morning seminar on a walk, building walkable communities. Should be fascinating. I'm really excited about that. And my only comment is, we did get the comment about travel around Southdale. Well, we also got a email about a lady that was upset with blowing things that hit her car, and another one that was upset because they got ticketed for a turn. It's hard to get around right now out there, and I know that there are a lot of times that a lot of different construction projects all seem to happen at once in one place. Well, this is the summer for that out there, and I think we're just all gonna need to have some patience. That's what I got.
Great, thank you. Member Sprague.
With four kids under eight, I know all about micturation, just let me tell you. Actually, last week, we had four cases of strep, three double ear infections, and one case of imputigo. So-
And everybody micturating.
Okay, I'm moving over here. I don't know about you, but I'm a mayor.
Micturate on from there. I got the, the email and corresponded with the person that was complaining about the Southdale area, and I, I said the same thing, that some patience is gonna be needed because there are just so many different projects going on. But I think when people see the transformation that occurs, both in the private sector and the public sector there, they're gonna be happily surprised. So please bear with us as we work through that. And I'm assuming that, do you have any comments on the, on the, on the construction management or anything that's going on down there that you can add just for the general public in terms of what they're doing?
Or the timing of completion, too, might be good.
Well, Hazelton Road will be closed through the month of June. That's what we're getting a lot of comments on, but there is a signed detour up to Seventieth down New York, and we handed out, we made brochures for all the businesses at Route of France, so they could hand it out to some of their residents. Phase one of the France Avenue improvements are getting close to completion. They're starting to work in phase two up at 66th Street. You're seeing a lot of sidewalk poured along France Avenue, so it all depends on the weather. We're getting too much rain, so that always delays them to dry it out before they can pour concrete in there. So things are coming along. It could be quicker if it rains less.
That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Compliment for you, Director Milner. Several folks over on West Fifty-Four Street have been very complimentary about how you handled all the options over there when we had to reject the bids on the street project, so congratulations on that. And then a couple weeks ago, we had Fairview Southdale Hospital in here to talk to us about some of the needs they had on their new ER. And I think all of us have either heard or gotten a call directly from them that they have decided to withdraw that request for any, any assistance to construct a new emergency room. So that'll be a non-issue for us. See, on the 27th, we, I was here early in the afternoon, they had two classes of Normandale French Immersion third graders here, and they were just terrific kids. And then the next day at noon was the Edina Public School Employees Retirement Party. There were twenty-eight of them this year, from a variety of different positions, teachers, bus drivers, administrative folks. Nice little celebration for them. And then tomorrow is another Southwest LRT meeting. I don't know what to tell you about the city of Minneapolis and where the city council is on, on their probable vote on municipal consent. And then tomorrow noon, we have MLC meeting up in-
Maple Grove.
Up in Maple Grove, yeah. I don't think it's at Dave and Buster's.
No, it's not.
All right. That's it for me.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got a couple items for you tonight. One is just to let you know a little bit more detail about the Southdale Two TIF District, Southdale Two Affordable Housing, TIF authority that we were granted this year by the state legislature. You'll hear a little bit more about this at our upcoming meeting on June 17th, because the council has to certify a number of, of conditions that are present in that TIF district in order for the law to become effective. That's the way that, that's the way that they constructed the language around it. Essentially, what, what this law allows us to do is that it has, it allows us to use the excess TIF in South, in TIF District Two, Southdale Two, which is the, we talked about it being the donut around the mall. That district has excess revenues, and this legislation allows us to use those excess revenues in other locations in Southdale to provide TIF financing to multifamily housing. And the benefit, specific benefit that we got is that normal housing TIF districts require that forty percent of the units be occupied by families that are at or below sixty percent of the area median income, and they reduce that number to twenty percent. That's, there are a couple other provisions, and we'll, and we'll discuss those in more detail next week, when, or, excuse me, on the 17th. But that's probably the, the biggest piece of this that's going to help us, and not just the, not just the reduction, but also that we get to use the, the Southdale Two TIF District. We have to certify the conditions that we kind of accept the terms, I'd say, on or before June 30th, so that's why we're gonna do it at the next council meeting. And the provisions stay in effect until June 30th of 2017. So we have to have something, if we don't do some kind of TIF deal before June 30th to seven, 2017, it goes away. So that's coming at you at the next council meeting. Another item that will be coming to you at the next council meeting is a comprehensive guide plan amendment regarding residential densities. As we began to move forward with the, with the Met Council in discussing what the density levels were going to be for the Lennar project, it, Met Council responded to us that they were not going to you, allow us to, to use FAR as the density guideline, and which is the way that we had constructed our, our guide plan. Well, this is fairly problematic for us, because the, the density per unit acre, density per units per acre numbers that were included in our comprehensive guide plan were really almost, almost looked like errors in, in, when you look at the, the most intensive housing district in the, being the CAC designation, our, our unit number was two to three units per acre. Met Council asked us if that was a mistake. We weren't sure if it was a mistake, and I think still haven't completely figured out what had happened there, but clearly, it's not, it's not what was intended. So we've been, we've prepared a comprehensive guide plan amendment. It's, it's had one stop at the, at the Planning Commission last week. They will have their public hearing on the matter on June, June 11th. It will come back to the city council then for a review and, and public hearing, right, on, on June 17th. So that'll be the next council meeting. Then if, if it is approved by the council, it gets forwarded on to the Met Council. Met Council has told us that they will review this at the staff level, which is an indication that they also believe it was some kind of technical error. They, they're not sure either. But all of our systems, our utility systems and our traffic systems are designed to accommodate the densities that the council has previously approved. And this is more than just an impact on just the Lennar project. It also has impacts on, on the other residential projects that we've also approved, including Aurora on France and, and the buyer lease project as well. So that is in front of you tonight. I think you should all have a copy of that tonight, the proposed amendment, and that is what will be coming on your agenda on the 17th of June. We, Karen sent an email to you all this, earlier this afternoon about food trucks. We're starting to receive more and more requests, more, more often and more forceful in some ways, requests to allow food trucks in town from primarily food truck vendors. Wouldn't you say that's true, Karen? Food truck vendors is where most of these requests are coming from? I mean, that's who's contacting Jeff Brown and asking, how do we get into your town?
I think that Jeff had clarified that we were actually getting a variety, not only just from vendors.
Not just vendors, but also people that want them and so forth.
Special events requests on the consumer side, though, for the most part.
So we've, a couple of, you know, a couple of options for you is just the status quo. We've not, we've done the, we've done Speak Up Edina, and you've, you've seen some of the feedback from that. We have not, as staff, detected any direction from council thus far that you wanted to change the status quo as it, as it goes to food trucks. So we haven't developed, and we have not developed any ordinance to start working its way towards you. And we won't unless you, unless you think this is a good idea and it's, and it's something you want to see. Got sort of a mixed response from council about this, but we haven't heard any one of you stand up to be the champion for food trucks yet, and so we haven't done anything with that, and we probably won't unless we hear, we hear from you in that regard.
If, if the requests are coming for special events, which is what, of course, I went, we talked today, it's consumer-driven. Others towns are doing it. It's just one of those things that evolves. I would, I would support looking at it for special events. I'm thinking about like when we have an event in the park, like Music in the Park Series, that might be a nice amenity to have, and I think in some locations like that, it might be okay, whereas away from those dense business districts where the current restaurants exist. So I might be in the minority, but-
I'm a brick and mortar person. I work in a brick and mortar shop. I feel that if somebody is committed to having a restaurant in our community and put in money and time, that we honor that. I responded earlier today, and I said the only way I would consider it is if it were special events that didn't happen in areas where there was food. So if you were doing a big deal out at Braemar Ice, maybe, that's our food that we would lose out on. I could see maybe if people wanted to hire one to come to their house, I'm actually gonna go to my brother-in-law's wedding in September in St. Paul, and the dinner is being served by a food truck for the reception. It's in their yard. But I don't see ever putting them at-
don't see ever putting them at 50th. I don't see putting them in the restaurant areas around Galleria. And even for our events in the parks, there are restaurants and, and things around there that they affect. The food trucks even up at 50th and France for the art fair this weekend affect those restaurants. Even though it's their biggest weekend of selling food, they are still affected by the food trucks. So I have a real reluctance to, to affect our permanent businesses.
I think Member Swenson said it well, and I concur with her.
Member Swenson, are you open to consideration of something, again, you, you mentioned the distances, like for instance Braemar Arena. Would you be open to something in, at, for instance Roseland Park, or is that too close?
There's, there's no...
I wouldn't want a permanent food truck there. We sell food up at there.
Right, but especially if it's...
You know, if there was an event that was the ovarian cancer walk or something, and they wanted a food truck, I might consider it for that.
Or music in the park.
But I don't want food trucks everywhere all the time that we have to worry about, that we have to police, that we have to inspect on a health basis. That, to me, is almost more trouble than it's worth.
So that's option one, which is what I, what I was saying as well, which is allow food trucks for special events only.
But really restricted special events.
But also, coupled with, coupled with that event being in an area that doesn't have, I mean, you might set it by feet. I don't know how many feet, but where, where it's not a reasonable walk that somebody could have, that your restaurants could do a picnic. For instance, at Centennial Lakes, you've got the farmer's market, but then you also have brick and mortar. And I think for most events at Centennial Lakes can be served between those two things.
Right.
Member Brindle.
My preference is special events as well, but we already have it. I mean, if you, we've had bike rides where we've been able to bring in a food truck by working through licensing and permitting and get that food truck there. We haven't had to do a food truck ordinance or anything like that. It's been driven by the event itself. So in my opinion, we already have what we're talking about. But as, as food trucks go, there are food trucks at the farmer's market every Thursday. They are part of what they put on as the market. It, they are different than the food offerings in the area, and they're careful to be sure that that's, I talked to Tom Shirley today about this. So they're, they're very careful about the mix.
And fall into arts as food trucks.
And fall, fall into the arts, and the Edina Art Fair both have food trucks. They're, they're a little more standard fare for fair food, if you will. And...
They out Smack Shack?
No, I have not encountered Smack Shack. But...
Lobster.
But anyway, but I'm a, I'm in favor of special events. I don't want to see them parking at Centennial Lakes, for example. There's already not enough parking at Centennial Lakes with what goes on there. 50th and France, out of the question. I, you know, other than a special event in a location, and that event would need a permit to have that truck there and go through the health department for its licensing, I think we already have what we need to allow it for special events.
Do they have enough work capacity in that department to handle that kind of licensing and inspection?
We'll, we'll have, we'll have a discussion with Jeff.
I don't want to hire somebody else just to bring in food trucks.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Fourth of July, last time, last council meeting, I asked you what, what are, what your plans were for Fourth of July, because if...
I'll leave it what I see.
Let's do it, people. Let's do it.
You said that last year, and you totally, totally left.
I set it up, and then I leave. That's the perfect way.
If you are going to do something as a council, and if you wish to have some kind of swag to, to share with your fans, we have to order it pretty soon for it to be here.
I think we should do it.
I kind of liked, from being the swag point of view, since I've, I've thrown, I threw the little footballs, balls.
Balls, yeah.
And then I handed out fans. Fans are tough, because everyone on the whole row wants them. But if you have balls, not, except that his kept bouncing back underneath the truck, and we almost ran over a couple kids, but...
That's why you can't throw at the Fourth of July parade. Throwing is prohibited.
Oh, it is? Oh, okay, fine. It was easier, because I didn't feel as guilty, because I couldn't give every kid one, because we ran out of fans a third of the way through twice, which makes you feel really bad at the end of the parade.
Let's show some council unity and get out there. Wow.
You don't have to tell me on tonight, but I do need to know by the end, we need to know by the end of the week.
This is something you need to ask at the beginning of the meeting, not the end, because the morale gets really low on this dais. I can just tell.
No, actually, something you mentioned last time, that the parade committee was seriously not happy with us last year, because we were handing out these fans and not staying with our unit, and, and that, that gets the parade committee pretty darn miffed. I do know that firsthand. So we, if we did this, we'd have to change it up considerably.
If I had been there, that would not have happened.
And, and, and just...
It would have been worse.
And just so people know, there are people who do not know that the council members were in the parade last year, because they didn't see, because people were running back and forth for more fans, and then they were on the other side of the truck. And so there...
That's a good point.
Okay.
I was lagging two blocks behind, I think.
You had very nice conversations along the parade route, but those of us who were doing the sprints to hand out the fans, I've had several people ask me whether or not I was in the parade last year.
All right, so...
Why don't we rent a food truck? We'll all hang off the edge of it.
So...
Open the side door.
What's that pedal, what's that pedal thing we could win at, at the Edina Art Fair? Could we pedal that?
Well, no, this is a pedal car for a three-year-old.
Yes.
Oh, that's an idea, though. How about that beer?
Well, you know what?
A beer pedal car.
You want to get a food truck and micturate.
Here is an idea. Here is seriously an idea. Liz O'Gran owns a Cycle 5. It's a bicycle for five people. You're all in a circle. You're all in a circle. One person has the steering wheel. Seriously, she owns this thing. So we could get ahold of Liz.
I won't be in town. You'll have to find someone.
Can you drive it with four?
Well, no, we can find a, yes, you can drive it with four, but we certainly could find a fifth to go along with us.
Yeah, he may be right behind you.
Yeah, that's right.
You, we could have a, we have a...
He has done a polar plunge. This is nothing for a guy like that.
This is nothing. But she does have a Cycle 5, so...
That's a good thing to have him in, instead of driving a truck with a float.
Can I suggest, since we still have more meaning left to go, Mary, that you contact her and see what the availability is, and let Manager Neil know, and then...
Very good.
Should I suggest we move on?
Just two quick things. One is to let you know, we got the Fred Richards repurposed kind of open public meeting is Thursday, June 12th at 7:00 PM at Public Works Parks Maintenance Facility.
Are we to attend that and observe, or are we, this is, this is...
It's your call. I would recommend you not, but we, and we, we had a little bit of discussion with the, the consultant about that as well the other day. But you've got to make that, you've got to make that call.
I think it's better if we don't show up. I really do.
Who's Megan?
Mayor and council, if three of you intend to show up, I've got it posted. So I have to know that by Monday, so I can have it posted properly.
I will not be there.
Just let it play out. That's...
And the last thing on, last thing on my list is just to, we, we gave really not much fanfare to the 50th and France decision tonight, because we had it on, on consent, but a very major step forward for the town and 50th and France. And that place is going to be tough to drive through the rest of the summer, but it's going to be great when it's done. So compliments.
Plus, once the Art Fair is over, then that building, that building skin is all going to, it's a little...
Right. There's a lot of activity going. There's a lot of discussion about how it's staged and communications with owners.
Am I supposed to ask you about the new sales tax changes?
Uh, no, we're going to do that next time.
Okay.
That's off the, tonight. That's all I have.
Anything else for the council? All right. We stand adjourned and calling to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority Meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. All right, we've got a meeting agenda. I've got a motion, got a second on the meeting agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the form of meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. Approval of minutes, HRA meeting of May 20.
Move your approval.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the meeting minutes for May 20, 2014. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried. One action item, one additional action item. Request for purchase, award of bid on the France, 50th and France parking away finding improvements that were, I think, just discussed with Manager Neil. Got a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Carried.
10:45. I had it.
Where you went?
Nothing, just my pride.